Wayland's here, too.
He is. He has to talk to us tonight.
Hi, Wayland.
Hi.
We told them at the meeting the other night that we had with the junior city council, we told them to be prepared for the city council grilling tonight.
You believe him?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
He's shaking in his boots.
Yeah, yeah.
Did anybody tell him he needs to wear a tie?
I have a vest on. It's a vest, so it's not a suit. So there's absolutely no tie.
You know, that's one of the things we haven't done as a council since March. We haven't worn ties.
That Wayland was going to be more professional than the rest of us.
That's about it, exactly.
He kind of shows all of you off at the city council meetings, the way he dresses.
There's Chris. Hi, Chris.
Happy belated birthday, Chris.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Another December baby. I like that.
Sagittarian.
That's right.
How old are you?
That's us.
I am of a certain age.
I like that. Aren't we all?
I think he's the baby.
I don't.
I don't know. I don't know, yes.
Me, Jim, and Robin.
Robin, yep, Robin is. Yeah, I reached a certain age on the second, so that's definitely a certain age.
Those are some pretty good-looking Christmas lights you got there, James.
I do.
Yeah.
I mean, it's every year you add on a little bit more.
Wow.
It's Robin.
Good evening, Robin.
Hi, Robin.
Talking about you, Robin.
Hi, everybody. How's it going?
We're talking about you.
We were saying you're the baby of the council, Robin.
Yep.
Yep, I am.
There you go. All right, council, it is 5:30. So Sean, are you ready?
I am.
All right, very good. Good evening, everybody. This is our city council study session for December 14th, 2020, and I will call this meeting to order. And this meeting is being held virtually and telephonically for the governor's emergency proclamation 20-28. The City of Auburn is prohibited from holding an in-person meeting at this time. City of Auburn Resolution 5533 designate City of Auburn meeting locations for our council, board, and commission meetings as virtual. All meetings will be held virtually and telephonically until King County enters into Phase 3, Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington phased reopening plan. Sean, would you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Jayrod.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
All right, thank you. Any announcements, reports, or presentations?
No, Chair.
And any agenda modifications?
No, Chair.
Okay, we will move into our agenda items for council discussion this evening. And the first item on the agenda is our facility needs and master plan draft recommendations briefing. And I'll turn it over to Director Gob.
Thank you. So for tonight, we're actually going to have Matt Larson, who is the project manager for this program, and his consultant provide you with a briefing of kind of where we're at and what we've been doing since the last briefing you had, which I believe was in March earlier this year. So with that, Matt, do you want to do a brief introduction?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, council members and mayor, for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today about this project. Like Ingrid said, it has been a while since we've we've come, you know, in front of you to talk about this particular project. For the record, I am Matt Larson, Senior Project Engineer for the City of Auburn. And I wanted to just do a quick reminder of this project, the Facility Needs Assessment Master Plan project. The the project objective basically is was to do a planning level effort to define the city's current and future needs and develop a master plan to meet those needs. And there were three main focus areas that we were that had immediate needs that we needed to assess. Obviously, when you get into a master plan like this, you know, you have to really look at the city as a whole, but we wanted to focus, we did look at the city as a whole, but our main, three main focus areas were, and still are, Public Works, Maintenance and Operations, Parks, Maintenance and Operations, and the Police Department at the Justice Center. So since our last discussion or briefing, obviously, it goes without saying that that a lot of things have happened, and the original plan was to have these recommendations in front of council this summer. And at the time, you know, with everything kind of going on, we thought it was prudent to really just pause for a brief minute, take a step back, reassess, make sure that we were, you know, on the right track, you know, maintaining the, you know, what our objectives were for this project under the the new world that we're living in. And so so one of the main, one of the main goals at the onset of this project that was identified by the project leadership team and then echoed by council members was to develop a plan that was achievable. And with the the help of the directors and the project team, we feel that that these draft recommendations are that they are achievable. And although they don't fix everything, they, you know, they don't fix all the needs that we've identified. They they will have meaningful positive impacts to the departments. And so so I'm going to hand it over to to makers, Julie and Beth. They're gonna they're gonna provide you with some more details about the process, you know, where we're at in this process, how we got here, and where we're headed. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Julie, I believe.
Thank you so much, Matt. I'm going to share my screen now. And first, wanted to mention that there are three of us here tonight. So I'm Julie Basick, Partner in Charge of the Project. Presenting with me is Beth Bachelder, who I believe many of you will recall presented the needs assessment when we were back before you earlier in the year. And then Cecilia Rousell is also here. She has provided the detailed analysis for the Justice Center site and PD. So if council has any questions in detail in that area, she may pop up to help us field those. Before I get into the presentation, we hope that this is about a 20, 25-minute overview of where we are today in the project. And we'd like to invite council, I know it's a little awkward on the video call, to interrupt us if you have questions as we're moving through, so we don't get too far ahead if there's something we need to explain a little better. But also know that I will stop at the end of every section and invite questions or initial feedback if that's all right with the Chair.
That is fine with me, Julie.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to quickly remind you about the project. Beth is going to overview, give you an overview of our alternatives that we initially evaluated, and then how we needed to revise those recommendations to respond to changing circumstances. We couldn't be more thrilled to be at this point in the project and ready to present our draft recommendations to you today. Quick reminder of project goals. Matt stated the main focus, but just so you recall, this project intends to help Auburn ensure you have welcoming space, safe spaces for your staff and for the public into the future. It intends to help you address the major facilities' needs and help your staff work better and more efficiently together. It intends to put facilities' needs into the context of your overall city budget. That's really important. Facilities and especially maintenance of facilities often get forgotten as priorities for jurisdictions managing all of the different things that you're working on. So as Matt said, our chart has from the get-go been to create a feasible plan. So this needs to be cost-effective, compelling, and supported. Here's our schedule. You may recall, we wrapped up our needs assessment phase in a presentation to you earlier this year. Then we evaluated alternatives that went on until about May, when, as Matt mentioned, we had draft conclusions and we were ready for our council presentation, but then became clear that we needed to take a pause for several reasons. So COVID-19 was causing a lot of focus for your staff and your leadership, needing to help the city respond and reshuffle and be able to operate within our pandemic environment. So that was one reason. The Black Lives Matter movement was another reason, and that is directly related to our first draft highest priority recommendation was to ask your public to fund a public safety bond and a major new police headquarters. So given that movement's area of focus, we knew that that was unlikely to be successful during this volatile time. So we wanted to reassess that recommendation. And then, of course, Auburn's financial context. We needed to make sure that these recommendations would work, given your near-term budget issues as well as your longer-term program and plan for funding. So here we are in Phase 3, working on our draft recommendations, getting your feedback today, hoping to update and wrap up the plan successfully by March of next year. Couple more introduction slides. It seemed important to just reiterate for the record, you know, what is the reason why you'd move forward with this kind of longer-term plan when in so many ways 2020 has felt like one crisis after another? And the reason is you need to step back and think about how long major facilities' investments take to realize. Minor projects can take a year, an average project, you know, three to five, and a major facilities' investment can take a decade to realize. So if you put planning on hold, that's just pushing further down the road investment in really important upgrades for your facilities. The other reason is downtime is actually a great time to plan because it can help you understand how to best position and and use your current resources and to get you in good shape to be able to take advantage of grant funds that become available or build partnerships. We also believe that strategic planning can help Auburn as soon as this plan is adopted, hopefully next year. So it can help you understand how to target your limited resources and your staff time on critical facilities. It can help you understand where you have opportunities to improve space use and gain efficiency in operations. And then it gives you some great information that allows you to do smart budgeting, to plan for those necessary investments over time, so that you'll be well-positioned to serve your community as Auburn evolves and changes into the future. Any questions before Beth provides an overview of the alternatives evaluation? Okay, pretty straightforward so far. Take it away, Beth.
All right. So it's been a while since we've been in front of you. Just wanted to quickly review the progress that we have made thus far. So looking at the needs assessment phase that we went through in the beginning, we looked at your facilities and found that there were quite a few challenges facing your staff. For police and courts, the Justice Center is just too small and it's not able to accommodate growth. The the, there's a lot of insufficient use of space as well as unusable space due to the seismic upgrades. As you can see in the top picture, that's the locker room, and there's a huge area that's not usable. And then, of course, in the crew support spaces, there's just not enough space, often spaces used for double functions. So, you know, there's not enough lockers. The senior staff have to change in their offices. The gym and mat room often, it is just too small, but it also doubles as storage sometimes. There's undersized evidence and armory. And then there is not enough parking for sure, especially during the trial juries, as well as limited security. For Maintenance and Operations, the biggest issue would be with crew support spaces. They are often inadequate in size and and there's just not enough space. As you can see on the pictures on the right, for the MNO headquarters, they have actually placed portable facilities throughout their their site to be able to support the crews. There's not enough shop or warehouse space. And then the for the high-value equipment and vehicles that they have, there's only a limited amount of covered space to store those, to keep them in a good functioning order for a long, a long period of time. All of the facilities are aging, which will require increased maintenance in the future, and that does not support growth. And with the existing and new parks coming online in the northeast area of the city, there's limited capacity for the Parks Department to serve that area. So when we took all the different challenges from that assessment, we developed three different alternatives to be able to address all of the needs. The first one, remain in place, evaluated using existing facilities and properties. So we looked at renovating or building new on the current facilities. For civic nodes, we envisioned new facilities for all departments in various areas of the city, just to kind of kind of spread things out and see how that worked. For dual campus, we envisioned two different campuses. One would be the MNO headquarters down at the GSA property, and then we put administrative and police at Lesco. For all of these alternatives, we evaluated them based on these four guiding principles that directly align to the the goals that Julie discussed earlier. So we wanted to see how well they were purpose-built, making sure that they were right-sized and efficiently designed, and that they would be well-positioned to serve the customers moving forward. We looked at how sustainable and resilient they were. Are they able to accommodate that change and growth in the future, and how well will they respond to emergencies? We evaluated how they met economic and community development goals, and we looked at how actionable each alternative was, how cost-effective and feasible they were to implement. When we evaluated all the alternatives, we found some major findings. For police, the Justice Center, having that being renovated, is just not a 50-year solution. And the most ideal position for them would be to have be located either downtown or at Lesco. For Maintenance and Operations, it was determined that leveraging the current properties was the best way to move forward to support the Public Works and Parks MNO. And also that Parks MNO does need to have that northeast platform to serve the parks that are up in that corner. For administrative, it was determined that those needs are less pressing than police and MNO. And that the best way to move forward was to improve the space use within the Annex and City Hall. And then, of course, to review the City Hall condition assessments in order to really target those investments to make sure that we look at extending the service life of that building. So our initial recommendations were a, for police, a $65 million project would be to build a new facility, either downtown or at Lesco. For Maintenance and Operations, we recommended a $142 million project that had them stay, the headquarters stay where they are, and renovate and build new buildings that were needed, as well as renovate and and the game farm park facility, and then build a new satellite for Parks MNO at Jacobson Tree Farm as the fund became available. And then we recommended that administrative would be just investing as needed in City Hall and Annex and revisiting that assessment in 15 years or so. When we brought that, the recommendations to the 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 team, it was determined that we needed to go back to the drawing board and actually evaluate some lower-cost options. So we looked at maximizing the space use in existing facilities. We looked at different lower-cost construction types. So instead of the 50-year facilities that were more expensive, we looked at more modular facilities that were more about 20 years and that were lower cost. We were focusing on addressing the most pressing issues and also looking at phase construction that would assist with keeping those annual payments low, making sure that each department is able to address the community's service needs. What are any questions?
Beth, this is this is Nancy. We are having a little bit of technical problem with hearing you. Your voice fades in and out. And I'm asking, and it appears that it's on your end, not ours. I don't know if if there is something that you can change on your side because when it goes softer, it's really difficult for people to hear.
Councilmember Malanga, have it raised your hand?
Councilmember Malanga, go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering, when you said that you felt the police facility and the O&amp;M building wouldn't last 50 years and wouldn't be renovated, but the Annex and the administration building would, what was it in your evaluation that you found that the police and the O&amp;M building wouldn't last for those 50 years?
Oh, I can take it as maybe I'm a little easier to hear than Beth. Is my sound coming in okay, Mayor? Okay, so the reason that the Justice Center wasn't determined to be a 50-year solution for PD is about a few things. Number one, the size of the facility and the site. Number two, the limited flexibility of the building. And number three, the challenge of how you have to deal with the court function as well. And so providing low-cost space, well, providing space for court without having to relocate them and and coordinate with the county for that use. So it was for those three reasons. For your City Hall, the Annex facility is in good condition. For your City Hall, it, in a perfect world, we would not recommend, to be frank, continuing to invest in that facility due to its significant structural and systems issues. However, it was determined, working with all your departments, that it is, it can hang in there if you make a target your maintenance funds, and it is not as high a priority facility to address as your police and your MNO. MNO, I think, is maybe the middle ground there. We have identified some facilities on that site that we're going to recommend investing to remodel. They're more flexible and able to be used for longer periods over time than your Justice Center, for example. So the the MNO facility is a complex facility. It's a mix. Some of those buildings can hang in there. They're simple enough. Others are, need to be replaced, you know, when you can.
Councilmember Trump Manuel, raise your hand.
Councilmember Trump Manuel, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You mentioned on the dual campus, GSA. What were you, what were we looking at that for?
You want to go? Okay, but we just were looking at properties that were large enough that to be able to accommodate both Parks and MNO headquarters. And, you know, currently with the the property that you have down there with the joint use with the fire, we thought that it might be a good option. That was determined to be a little too far away for service needs, as well as just not really feasible as far as obtaining the GSA property.
Oh, okay. And so you mentioned that Lesco will be a perfect site for a police department?
That's one of the recommendations, both that and downtown. The police said that 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 was a good location for them to be.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if I could provide a clarification on that, so what we talked about for the PD is not necessarily directly at Lesco Park, but near Lesco, so in the vicinity of Lesco. Does that make sense?
Ingrid, yeah, you just answered my question. Not sure about Councilmember Trump Manuel. You answered my question.
Okay.
No, you you answered it okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I just, what was a little bit unclear? It sounds like moving the administrative campus to GSA is off the table. Am I correct?
So our different alternatives that we were evaluating never actually recommended moving the administrative functions to the GSA campus at all. It was between their current location at City Hall or at the, in the Lesco vicinity, so.
Oh, okay. So so basically, our offices would either be downtown or maybe at Lesco, but you're saying in the vicinity of Lesco?
Yes.
Okay. Would we need to, like, buy new property to make that happen, or how would that work?
So there's a number of scenarios that could work, but the main takeaway is that it's not the highest priority need or project, and that for we recommending relooking at the question of admin facilities and functions in about 15 years. So there are a number of options we looked at. Could you build on your existing City Hall site? Yes, that we actually identified a variety of other properties in the downtown and in the Lesco campus area that might work. So there's a lot of different options, but we didn't get more into it because it seemed like the higher priority projects were MNO and police. And that is what Auburn can, in our, that's what we're thinking Auburn can afford to address in the near term. I love these questions. I'm wondering if I should complete the last third of the presentation is about what we are recommending. Would it be a good time, or are there any more burning questions on our analysis so far?
Well, let's go ahead and finish up because I think there probably will be some more questions after the next segment.
These are great questions. Love it. And thank you, Beth. I think you're, you hopefully came through just fine, and the council can ask for more information if they missed anything, if your voice was soft. Okay, so we went back to the drawing board, given all that 2020 has thrown at all of us, and we worked very closely with department directors, subject matter experts to come up with what we feel are a more cost-effective approach, but also with great benefit for Auburn. So for police, our draft recommendation is to purchase the property that you need for PD headquarters. Now, that could be in the Lesco campus area, or it could be downtown. Either one works for them operationally. And then build a new evidence facility on that new property. By doing that, that allows you to renovate a number of spaces on your existing site to really get the most use out of that site and the most use out of the investments you've already made in that facility for the next near-term period. So you would renovate renovate the evidence room to provide physical training space. You would renovate the area that was formerly physical training space for additional offices for your officers and detectives, et cetera. And then you would renovate some of those lockers so that they could work better for your police force. So this is about a $10 million project in $2024 and sets you up to, in the longer term, pursue that public safety bond or other funding mechanism to build a new headquarters. We think this investment will pay dividends. It solves your evidence storage problem, and those of you that know about police, these requirements are ever increasing. It's a huge drain on their operations, and their space right now is far. It's a huge drain on their operations and their space right now is far inadequate. They're doing an incredible job out there, but they, this will solve that problem. It also helped their physical training, training, their mat room, efficiency of them setting up and having great training space is one of the worst components of their current situation. So it solves that problem and it sets you up to have your site set and efficiently your new evidence building that'll be right there ready when you're ready to go for that new headquarters. So for M and O, we're recommending a four-phase investment project on your existing site. The first phase is relatively low cost investment in some projects that are already contained in your C F P. So they enclose some of your highest value vehicles into a parking area. That's really important, protects that investment. It adds a little storage and it works with the adjacent school district to hopefully construct a fuel island that can be used and shared between yourselves and the S D. In phase two and three, it's a series of new construction and then renovation of spaces that you vacated. So the yellow is phase two. You'd build a crew building, a wash rack and relocate some storage and staff parking. And then phase three, you do renovate the main building on that site and build some additional storage. Finally, in phase four, you build covered fleet parking to again protect your investment in those critical and very expensive fleet and equipment you have out there. So this cost estimate is 24 million. That's in $20.24 and it does not include the phase one C F P projects because those are already contained in your budget. Another critical recommendation here, and this is not a cost, doesn't have a cost, but it's really important. And that is in phase one, to work to transfer the deed restriction that's shown here in the hatch off the site. So this would open up this part of the site for functional uses and to support M and O and allow for environmental protected areas as well as recreation areas to be located to better spaces in your community to support those functions. For Parks M and O, we're recommending addressing their critical game farm parks facility by adding some crew space and remodeling the remaining shop and storage space that's there. At Jacobson Tree Farm, this is very exciting. We recommend that while you're building out the park and phase two of the master plan, perfect time to build a small focus crew M and O facility. So that crew can not only work on the park, they can cover your parks in northeast Auburn in total. So you've now got a park satellite that's well positioned and efficient to cover that northeast park area. And then at G S A Park, which was the site we were just looking at, along with that phased redevelopment, you're also remodeling and adding some storage for parks at the G S A Park headquarters site. So this 24 million invested over 15 years, we believe is an important investment in these critical M and O facilities. It addresses, it's not a full rebuild, which is what we were hoping, but it does address the most critical crew needs. It increases your fleet shop is very undersized. It makes sure they have enough room to work on your fleet vehicles. It gives you a little more storage. And it plans and places facilities in northeast Auburn to support your growing community. It also, and this will return, provide a return to the city of Auburn. It protects that high value fleet, which is more efficient, requires less maintenance and allows you to extend the replacement cycle of those vehicles. So that is a great project that will save you money over time. So here it is in total. We are recommending a near-term investment of 10 million to meet a number of critical police needs.
Julie, I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Oh, sure. We're recommending, so in total, in summary, for police, we're recommending a near-term investment of 10 million to address, but build new evidence storage and remodel the current site. And then positioning for a longer term investment in a new headquarters as funding allows. Those would be paid for by bonds, both of those projects. For M and O, we're recommending the phased investment in a variety of sites as I walked through. And those would be funded with a variety of sources, including bonds, general fund, utility impact fees and equipment rental funds for the parks facilities. And then for your admin, again, it's, we did identify some needs for your admin facilities, but determined through the process, they're not your highest priority. So do critical maintenance projects and space use, improve your space use and your efficiency of those facilities. But hang on and revisit in about 15 years after you've made it through addressing your highest priority police and M and O facilities. A couple more slides to show you how these all look when overlaid together and laid out over time. So this highlights our initial recommendations. So these were the ones that Beth moved through. That was a 50-year plan that targeted over $200 million in investments in Auburn facilities. So I think we, we working with your leadership took another look and said, you know, that, yes, that would solve all our problems, but that is not likely achievable, given the current circumstance. So we rolled up our sleeves and we present to you today a lower cost 15-year plan that doesn't solve 100% of your problems, but makes smart, cost-effective investments to get you through to the next 15, 20 years. Now, it's also important to understand the impact of our draft recommendations on your general fund. So what you see here on the left is our revised recommendations, total project costs. And what you see on the right is our estimate, working with finance and your department directors on how that will impact your general fund. So you can see here, you've got a couple of years, starting in 2024, where there's some five-ish, six million dollar investment. These are to get your parks facilities up and running and to pay off the bond to fund that $10 million police project. So that's that consistent blue bit here that would come out of your general fund. The payment on the bond would come out of your general fund. As you move through the 15-year period, you can see there are surges from one to two to $3 million that you'll need to put in. But in our estimation, given the high priority of these investments, working with your directors, that seemed achievable and workable, especially if you have some time to plan and to work that into your budget. In summary, and then we are very happy to take questions and hear your feedback. We believe that these draft recommendations are approaching meeting the goals for the project. So we think they address your most critical issues and needs, including setting police up for 50 years for evidence storage, 20-year fix for public works that addresses crew needs and protects your high value fleet that you already own and have invested in, and strategically positions those parks crews to serve your growing community. It also prioritizes investment in public safety property and other foundational projects like transferring that deed restriction. So purchasing a property for your future police headquarters and transferring that land will ensure you own the property that you need to support your facilities into the future. And as we believe, and we'll check this with council right now, but we believe this is a cost-effective and achievable path forward. Final slide, our next steps. So where we're going from here is to refine these recommendations based on council feedback and further director and finance review. We'll compile a draft plan. It'll get reviewed by everyone and then hopefully ready to wrap by March of 2021. Thank you so much. Would love to take questions and hear feedback.
Julie, thank you very much. An excellent, excellent presentation and very thoughtful in the process of doing the analysis. We greatly appreciate that. I've got a couple of questions to start with. One, you mentioned the renovation of the Justice Center, third floor is an office. What is that being used for now?
That is being used for their gym and training facility. So they have classroom and physical training up there currently. And you might recall, if you've been through those facilities, both of those spaces are very awkward, inefficient, not effective for their functions.
Right, appreciate that. I bet everything but the third floor in that building, so. And then also on the draft recommendations for the police, on your general impact, general fund impact slide, we talk about the council manic bond. So are we potentially looking at the bond to cover the entire amount of the, of the police work? And if so, I'm not quite sure. Is there, and finance may know this better than I or anybody, but is there a limit on the amount of council manic bond authority?
Julie, do you want me to take that one?
I was going to say, I could, I think I could answer it, but I prefer a city staff person that's closer to it. Thank you, Ingrid.
Yeah. So we are talking with finance and we didn't go into the details of exactly how the bonding would work for this because that's part of the next step. We want to make sure that one, we're on the right track first. And then part of the last report will be kind of coming up with exactly what that financing plan looks like. Council manic bonds do have a limit as to how much the council can issue and it's definitely dependent upon how much payment the general fund can support.
Okay.
So, so that is definitely an option and we definitely have the capacity to do council manic bonds for these items. But that is part of what finance is currently evaluating with the options that you've seen here tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think I had one more here. Hang on a second. I don't recall what it was, so I'll pass on to other council members that have questions for now.
Councilor Sterns has raised his hand?
Councilmember Sterns.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I had a question along the same lines. I mean, it would just, I would feel more comfortable, you know, getting, getting more information about the bonding situation before moving forward because that seems to be, you know, that seems to be critical to this plan. So, you know, you had a graph and maybe just like another graph that shows, what do you know, the bonds and then what the debt service would possibly be. And for, you know, I don't know how many bonds there are, but just showing that would be really helpful to me. A graph showing what the bonds are for and then how many of them, how much it's going to cost, it could cost under your plan. So that would really be helpful to me. Thank you.
Yeah, and that would be what we would plan to bring back with the next briefing to council is what exactly that financing plan looks like if council is in concurrence with kind of where those, the draft recommendations are going for the options that Julie's reviewed with you tonight.
Right, maybe I guess I, I'm still not clear then because I mean, I think, I have a sense that, okay, here's an overall number, but I just need to know more like what, what the deputy mayor was saying, the relationship to the bond to that number. Because it could be, you know, I just would feel a little more comfortable with a better background on that.
Okay, and Julie, can you back up to the slide that shows the general fund?
You bet.
Yeah. So the, the slide that is on the right of that, if you look at that little blue lip that's on there for each year, that is basically the payback of that bond amount to do the police work. To give you an idea of what that looks like. So it's a couple hundred thousand a year to do that 10 million bond for the initial police preferred options.
Okay, so there's like one bond?
Right now, so there's one bond for that. There probably, and it may just be a joint bond if it's all council manic, it would be one bond that we would do for everything. A large portion of the M and O work can be funded through the utility costs and factored into our utility rates because those facilities support the three utilities heavily in what we do. So there's some portion of that and that's part of what finance is currently working through is to determine exactly how can we do that bonding? And could we do it all as one council manic bond or would we need to do multiple bonds to make it work? It's going to be more cost effective if we can do one bond because then you're only incurring the cost of issuing that bond once and paying it off once instead of multiple bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. If I could just add 10 seconds more. Thank you so much, Ingrid. I would also say we have been working closely with finance and they are continuing to evaluate this. But this, to their mind, you can, you know, we presented to you today what we believe is fundable and financeable given Auburn's circumstances and budget. So that's for council to decide, but in terms of just that red flag review from finance and looking at these cash flows and what the general fund would need to support. You know, they, they, they felt comfortable with us bringing this to you as something, okay, the details aren't set, but we could make this work. And then just a second small point, the police, we have, we've modeled this at 350,000 a year for that $10 million project. So that's what that little blue bump is and that would extend, that would likely go beyond the 15 years they're showing. So it might be a 20 or a 30-year commitment at that payment level to support that bond. But more details to come. Thank you.
Councilor Malanga has raised her hand?
Go ahead, Councilor Malanga.
Yes, thank you. Earlier, I had a question about the police facility and then the maintenance operations facilities and those being the ones that we should replace. It sounded like from your answer, it's mainly due to the inefficiency of the current locations. So my question is, if for some reason the council decides not to go for a bond, or if we do decide to go for a bond and if it's one that the voters have to pass and they don't pass for whatever reason, what is the consequence of us keeping our current facilities? Is there any safety concerns we need to be aware of? Anything of high impact that really makes us have to move these facilities?
So that's a great question. I would say, just, just to be clear, and I think you understand, but just for others that might have listened, that the inefficiencies of the current sites for the Justice Center, it's because of the building and the historic nature and the seismic retrofit that's occurred in that building. The site in terms of a location is very efficient for your P D to operate from. So that's why they could relocate anywhere to downtown or to Lesco area, as we were saying. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. The safety issues, so we were not, we do not identify or, and we weren't informed of any critical safety issues today. Your facilities team is on top of those issues. However, your most critical facility to review that comprehensively is your city hall. And so we do recommend investing in a facility condition assessment and having an engineering team come and do a thorough job identifying systems replacements and seismic issues so that the city can have the information you need to proactively address potential concerns that might arise in the future while you're, while you're investing in that building to extend its life cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Brown's raised her hand?
Councilor Brown, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a comment. I just really appreciate the way that you all have responded to the changing conditions. You know, there are so many people in our town and across our state that have been impacted by the economic conditions brought on by the pandemic. And I'm glad to see that, you know, we're responding to that in a way that I think is quite responsible, you know. And of course, you know, there are a lot, there's more information for us to evaluate moving forward, but I do appreciate the approach. Thank you.
Other questions, council? Okay, and Julie, I really appreciate looking at, listening to deed restrictions on the ball fields and potentially relocating those ball fields. That's every time I drive by there, I get the vision of our. That's every time I drive by there, I get the vision of our somewhat campus activities we can have in that site. And you have captured that with your team very well. If there are no more questions, greatly appreciate the work that you have done and the information coming forward for council to review. And it sounds like we have a, at least a council consensus that we need to explore this as we go further with the analysis and data you'll continue to provide. I like, I personally like the timeline now, and I think that helps us greatly in the efforts to help improve these facilities as we go forward. So Julie and Beth, and of course Matt, thank you very much for your time. And if you have any other closing comments, Julie, I'd welcome them.
Not for me. That was what we needed, I think, to move forward, to work with your leadership and finance, to refine the package and bring it back to you in 2021. Matt, did you have any final comments?
No, just thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, once again, thank you all, and we definitely look forward to the next round. Appreciate it very much. Okay, next we will move on to agenda item 5B, which is the Auburn Symphony update with Director Faber. You're muted, Daryl.
How about right now?
No, you're not muted.
All right, well, thank you, Deputy Mayor, of course. Yeah, annually with the Auburn Symphony, we have a kind of a state of the symphony at the year end as their review, as they have a contract with the city for performances. And I'm excited this evening to have Cindy Lean. I think she's coming into us all the way from Wisconsin, I recall, as well as the ASO Executive Director Rachel Perry on the line as well. So they're going to do a brief overview of the symphony, I think, end it with about a 30 minute, or 33 minute video. And we also have on the, on the call here, Julie Kruger, she's our arts manager with the city who works with myself to coordinate the great relationship the city has had with the symphony over the years. And I think they're going to address kind of how COVID has affected it as well. So Cindy, I'll turn it over to you and to Rachel, and hopefully all the technology works.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you, Julie. Good evening, city council members, Mayor Backus. We would like to update you on the Auburn Symphony Orchestra, what we've been doing, our, our plans for the future as best as we can, any of us can plan for the future right now. We're doing our best to make lemonade out of lemons, just like everyone else. My overview of what we've been doing and have planned for the future looks completely than we, completely different than we had ever imagined it would look. Our plans kind of started to go to the wayside starting last March, of course, and starting with, we had to cancel our finale performance in April. Generally, our, our biggest, most well-attended performance of the year and also our gala. But we buckled down as a board and as an organization to look at how we needed to go forward and where we were going to draw funds from to keep our organization going. Auburn Symphony Orchestra has been on an upward trajectory, and we were planning six concerts for this year, increasing the number of concerts, the symphony concerts, and also the chamber concerts. We were looking at new and different venues to add to our chamber concert schedule. And we still, we still plan to go forward with that when the day comes that we can get back together and have live concerts with in-person audiences. We've canceled, as I said, we canceled our last concert of the season. But we turned immediately and started looking at what we could do online. And through our executive director, our music director Wes Schultz, and their knowledge, their networking, research, our brainstorming, the board, has come up with a number of creative ways to make music and present music to the public and to our community. We've been doing a lot through Facebook, and we've had really, really good results with our Facebook music, our videos, small clips, and also the content that we have posted on our website. And any of our concerts have been linked on the website for viewing after it was initially presented. All of our content has been available at no charge throughout the pandemic. Since we felt remaining connected to our community and providing comfort and refuge is really important at this time. And I know a lot of different arts organizations across the country have been creative and found ways to be able to charge for concerts and presentations. We've just opted right now not to go that route. And as long as we can continue to provide free content, that's what we would like to do. Our most recent concert was our holiday concert. And it's so far, it's been our most watched video of any of the concerts. It's had over 600 views. As I said, all of our content presentations have been at no charge. In the last three months, we've had over 433 hours of watch time on YouTube video and with over 3,700 views. Our marketing person has been following the analytics and it's been really a positive to watch the numbers go up and people partake and enjoy the music that we've been providing. Our musicians, who are all professional freelancers in the region, have been hardest hit by the pandemic. The few musicians we have been able to employ since the pandemic began have also, they've gotten more work from ASO than any other organization they play for. So we've done our best to try to keep them engaged, and they've been very willing to kind of roll and give us ideas and kind of roll with the ideas that we've come up with. We continue our education and community engagement as best we've been able to. We've tried to be creative during the pandemic with new ways to prevent, or to, to produce and provide education for our community, and education falls in a lot of different scopes, being whether it's educating people on what symphony music is and how to listen to it, how to understand it, or whether it's education in our schools with our kids and in the school orchestras. And we've taken time to meet with each of you. We very much thank you for the time that you gave us to talk the new council members to help you understand who we are and what we do in the community and what we, we, how we would like to be in the community as far as providing music and education for music. We've also been meeting with other nonprofit leaders in the community to see how we can partner with them and help each other, especially during the pandemic. But I think going forward, how we can help service each other to grow each of our organizations, whether it's the museum or the chamber or the food bank, whatever organization it is, how we can work together for the betterment of the community. We filmed at two new venues, Sue's Creek Botanical Garden and the Green River College. Both of those concerts are available for you, linked on our website if you're interested. We adapted our annual partnership with Interurban, Interurban Center for the Arts to an online format. And we are making long-term plans for Carnegie Hall's Link Up program for students in Auburn. Really excited about that. I think it's going to be an awesome program. It's had great reviews all across the country. So if you're interested, you can Google the Carnegie Hall's Link Up program and see a little bit, read a little bit more about what it is. We're not planning to have in-person audience concerts until fall of 2021. We just feel that by the time we would get word that we're back, back to whatever normal is going to be and can have those in-person concerts, we then have to get our orchestra back together and, and go through the process of choosing music, planning our concerts and beginning rehearsals to be able to provide a concert. We will continue to create new content and plan to have groups up to 25 musicians by the spring. And we are hopeful that our outdoor concerts in the summer of 2021 may be possible in whatever form that's going to be, whether it's a small group or a social distance group. But we would like to resume outdoor concerts. We hope to present six symphony concerts in the 2021, 2022 season with expanded program to include a pops program. So I think our plans are to come back bigger and better and continue our upward trend in the community. Our numbers of attendance have continued to grow and, and we've, I think, now been working and focusing on refining our online performance. And hopefully we'll be able to continue with some of that to provide free content for our, our patrons. Our Board of Directors and our staff are grateful for your continued support. And we look forward to whatever the future holds in the next six to 12 months and being able to massage and form our presentations and our concerts to whatever, whatever we can due to the, due to the pandemic and opening back up again. Rachel?
Yes, I just want to echo that and say thank you to City Council and, and Mayor Backus for continually supporting the symphony at, you know, such a high level. It really makes the music possible. And when we, you know, entered COVID and really wanted to get out as much content as possible for free, you know, turning your business model on its head and saying, no, we're not selling tickets is pretty unique for an art organization. And so we really appreciate the support from, from everyone in our community and especially the city in order to keep going and create all this content. You know, before pre-pandemic, we had, Cindy touched on this a little bit. Pre-pandemic, we had three videos on our YouTube, and now over the last nine or 10 months, we've posted upwards of 45, I think, by now. And so we're really proud of all of, all of that we've been able to do. And really looking forward, you know, this is sort of, you know, different time. And when we come back to in-person concerts, we're just, feel like we're going to come, come roaring back and you're all invited to that first concert back where we can have an audience again. And I think we're going to end, I'm happy to answer any questions, certainly. And Julie Kruger, I think, has the video queued up, so I'll just give a quick introduction. This piece is called a Yuletide Reel. It's the last piece on our holiday program. And I really encourage you to get your favorite holiday beverage and sit down and watch the whole thing. It's just under an hour. And it's really fun, kind of variety show type holiday program, complete with an introductory message from Mayor Backus. And so if you haven't had a chance to watch it yet, you can watch it through January 3rd on our YouTube page.
That was, that was excellent. And I really applaud what you've been able to do during this pandemic time. One of my, my favorite movies is a Clint Eastwood movie. And one of the famous phrases in that movie is you improvise, adapt, and overcome. And I think that's what you folks have been able to do in these strange times. And it's really great to see how much online presence you, you've actually done now. And for having almost 4,000 people view what you've done is just phenomenal. And the symphony is, remains a vital piece of, of the arts in Auburn. We greatly appreciate your efforts. So Cindy and Rachel, really thank you very much. And Daryl, anything you need to say?
No, I'd like to thank them for their presentation. And if you do get a chance to watch more of that video, there's an amazing flyover of Auburn via a drone for the first period of it. It really makes you proud of your city.
Very good. Excellent.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Oh, Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to say, I think the orchestra, just where the symphony is fantastic. And really like your Instagram page. That's important. And, you know, live music is so, so important to all of us. And, you know, we, we need music to, you know, I needed it more than ever to make it through this year. Music is, is just, it's essential for some of us. And so I'm so grateful to the symphony for all you're doing for our community and beyond.
Thank you.
Councilmember Truman, you also raised your hand.
Councilmember Truman, go ahead.
Yes, I also want to echo what Councilmember Sterns said. At this time of year, I remember going to all of the concerts that were held here in town and also to see the kids when you did the Christmas program. That was just so nice to always go to and be part, you know, help out there. So thank you for continuing to doing this. And Cindy, you're very missed here, and it's nice to see you.
It's nice to see you too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again.
Any other comments, council? All right, once again, thank you very much, and we look forward to the future presentations of the Auburn Symphony. All right. Once again, thank you very much. And we look forward to the future presentations of the Auburn Symphony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is our 2021 Special Focus Area Chair and Vice Chair selections. And Council, thank you very much for responding to our council assistant with your selections. And I have them in front of me here. And I'd like to open this up for, for discussion so we can finalize this, this evening for the appointments of the Chair and Vice Chair of the, of the four special focus areas. So currently what I have is, and I'll start from my chart here from left to right. So under Community Wellness, we have Councilmember Malanga and Councilmember Trump Manual. For the Finance, Technology, and Economic Development, we have Councilmember J-Rod and Councilmember Baggett. For Public Works and Community Development, we currently have Councilmember Sterns who is, who has looked at that as a special focus area you'd like to serve on. And then for Municipal Services, we have Councilmember J-Rod, Councilmember Sterns, and Councilmember Trump Manual. So in all these, you'll notice that Deputy Mayor DeCoursey is not listed yet. So as we go through, we need to kind of look at, at this. And let me start with the Community Wellness. And Councilmember Trump Manual, I believe we would like to ask Councilmember Malanga to chair that for the coming year?
Yes, I would like to step down and appoint Councilmember Malanga to take, be the Chair.
So Councilmember Malanga, are you okay with chairing the Community Wellness Special Focus Area for 2021?
Yes, I accept the Chair position. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So for Community Wellness, we will have Councilmember Malanga as the Chair and Councilmember Trump Manual as the Vice Chair. On to our Finance and Economic, Finance, Technology, and Economic Development. So currently we have Councilmember J-Rod and Councilmember Baggett. So that one for Chair and Vice Chair, I'd like to discuss that.
I would have Councilmember Baggett be the Chair because I've not had the opportunity to do the finance portion of it. And he is, he is the master at it.
Okay.
Why don't you get your everywhere, James?
He's also the current Chair.
Yeah, that's acceptable to me if it's acceptable to James.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then for Finance, Technology, and Economic Development, Councilmember Baggett will once again be the Chair of that Special Focus Area with Councilmember J-Rod as the Vice Chair. For Public Works and Community Development, currently Councilmember Brown is the Chair. And we have Councilmember Sterns who expressed, has expressed the entrance, interest in serving on that Special Focus Area. Councilmember Brown, would you like to continue on with that? Or what is your preference?
I would, I would like to continue on. But I have served as Chair and would be open to the idea of Councilmember Sterns chairing if he's desirous of that position.
Councilwoman Sterns?
That's quite kind of you, Chairman Brown. I like saying that, Chairman Brown.
I like that.
Yeah. No, I, I'd be, yeah, I'd be honored to do that.
Okay, very good. Looking at my notes here, okay. And then for Municipal Services, we had Councilmember J-Rod, Councilmember Sterns, and Councilmember Trump Manual who expressed interest in serving on that Special Focus Area. So I'll leave that open for discussion between us now.
I, I was, I could jump in. This is Chris. Since I'm doing some more work on public, on public works, I'd be glad to make room and step off that committee.
Okay.
No, Councilmember Sterns, since you and Councilmember J-Rod have served on that, I would take my name, withdraw my name out of that.
I insist.
Okay, let me, let me make this easy then, if that's okay. Councilmember J-Rod, would you be willing to chair the Municipal Services Committee?
Would.
Okay. And Councilmember Trump Manual, you will withdraw your name from that as well? Okay.
Yes.
Then your Deputy Mayor will serve as the Vice Chair of Municipal Services. And that way each of us have a Special Focus Area we're serving on. If that's okay with anybody.
That's okay. So I get, I get to boss the Deputy Mayor around?
You do. Yes.
Oh, awesome.
Within limitation.
Keep him honest, James. Keep him honest.
Okay, let me just quickly recap again. So Community Wellness, we have Councilmembers Malanga and Trump Manual. For the Finance, Technology, Economic Development, Councilmember Baggett and Councilmember J-Rod. For Public Works and Community Development, Councilmember Sterns and Councilmember Brown. And for Municipal Services, Councilmember J-Rod and Deputy Mayor DeCoursey. Okay. That is noted. And another
Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead.
A quick question. Did you say Baggett and J-Rod were for public works?
No, no, no. For Finance, Technology, and Economic Development.
Okay, thank you.
So another one of my favorite movies, let's say, So Let It Be Written, So Let It Be Done. All right, very good. Thank you all for that. Again, thank you for the preliminaries you, you did with our Council Assistant, Antoinette. Okay, next we will move on to ordinance number 6808 and Director Hinman.
Yes, and good evening Deputy Mayor, Council, and Mayor. Thank you for having us this evening. I have with, with us tonight, the Chair of the Auburn Junior City Council, Waylon Menzio, and our Vice Chair, Jonathan Malanga. And they have a request of the City Council regarding the, the ordinance that informs how the Junior City Council operates. And they've come up with some ideas on improving the functionality of the Junior City Council. So at this time, I will turn it over to our Chair, Waylon Menzio, to discuss with you what they are desiring with this new ordinance, with this updated ordinance.
Hi, thank you for letting us be here tonight, Council and Mayor. I have been having connectivity issues, so I had to join on my phone. So bear with me. It should work fine, but that's what I had to do. And I know Vice Chair Jonathan Malanga has been having connectivity issues as well. So bear with us. But we wanted to change, there's Section 2.07.040 of Auburn City Code that refers to membership of the Auburn Junior City Council. In Section A, we wanted to remove. So it says, "The members and the alternate members shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council from among students who have been nominated by the principals of the schools they attend with input from their teachers and counselors." We want to remove the section that starts with have, like, have been nominated by the principals of the schools that they attend with input from their teachers and counselors to submit a commit, completed application. So the application is now online. We want to change that. So once they fill out the application, that's all they're required to do. They don't need to attach the letters separately because that's a little confusing. And we want to increase membership. So to fulfill that letter of recommendation section, in Section E, we wanted to add, so it says, "Each member and alternate member shall serve a term of two years." And then add, "Interested students shall submit a completed application that includes a letter of recommendation from the principal of the school they attend with one teacher or counselor to the mayor." So this was discussed in one of our meetings, how we wanted to make it the process simpler and easier to understand. So this will be like one application and we'll do a form that's able, that a principal is able to fill in and a teacher is able just to fill in with students' names and, and information about the student so that it's a faster and easier transaction. And then also in that section, we wanted to put, "The mayor and city council will appoint and confirm new members and alternates." Instead of, "The mayor and city council shall solicit nomination from the school principals and appoint and confirm new members." And that was all we wanted to do for membership and applications. I believe Vice Chair Malanga wanted to talk about our meeting dates.
Thank you, Chair Menzio. Hello, City Council Members and Mayor Bacchus. We would also like to change Section 2.07.070A of the same local ordinance, 6808. And now it says, "The regular meetings of the Junior City Council shall be held at least once per month at a regularly scheduled date and time and shall be held in the Auburn City Council Chambers." We would like to change that now to City Hall. And we also want to select a regular meeting time at the beginning of each year to increase member attendance. And for 2021, we want to make it the second and fourth Thursday of every month at the same time, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
So those were the changes we wanted to make right now. We are looking over this and seeing what will work best to take the Junior City Council forward to increase member participation in the board so that we can do even more on the behalf of youth in Auburn. So the way, just like Vice Chair Malanga said, the way we'll do the meetings is we will ask at our first meeting in January, when, what meeting times work best. And then we will put out a meeting notice of what our meetings will be the rest of the year. We've already decided a meeting time for next year. So we'll put that out at the beginning of next year, which will be the second and fourth Thursdays of every month. And that will be a year, annual motion to do.
Councilmember Trump, you also raised your hand?
Councilmember Trump Manual.
Chair Waylon Menzio. What, what made you want to change the date? What dates do you normally, did you normally meet? And why a Thursday?
The dates we normally meet are the first and third Mondays of every month, the first, no, the third Mondays of every month. That's what it says right now. And that was difficult, especially for city staff because that is the same day as a city council meeting. And it was hard to get the staff and the resources available to have our meeting and then go straight to the city council meeting. And then we also wanted to have two meetings per month. And the best times that worked for our members were Thursdays at 7:00 PM. And we decided the second and fourth Thursdays because those are before city council meetings, regular city council meetings.
Would that in, in, intrude in any of the sports times? Because I heard that that was part of the reasons why you couldn't get members.
We looked in, so with our current members, we asked during the meeting, what time worked best for all of us? And we know that sports schedules aren't going right now. If we need to make changes to the meeting dates, we will. But right now that seems to be what works the best and where we can get everyone to attend.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Councilwoman Sterns, just raise your hand?
Councilwoman Sterns?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So Chair and Vice Chair, congratulations. I really liked the work you did on this. It makes me feel like we're in extremely capable hands, potentially like hands of future lawyers, which is a good thing. But I, I just actually had a question. I was looking at the ordinance you were amending and it mentioned that you could have membership from someone from the Muckleshoot Tribe. And I was just wondering if that's ever happened or if that's ever happened.
Not to my knowledge that has that happened yet. But we, what we have been talking about, and we made a subcommittee for membership recruitment. And we are definitely looking into having a member from the Muckleshoot Tribe because we recognize that we have many members from Auburn Mountain View High School and Riverside, Auburn Riverside High School. Now we're looking at reaching out to members from Auburn High School, Olympic Middle School, Cascade Middle School, and West Auburn High School, and then also the member from the Muckleshoot Tribe. So those are all areas we're focusing on right now.
Wow, that's really cool. Great. Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Malanga, just raise your hand?
Councilwoman Malanga, go ahead.
Thank you. Great presentation. My question is, it says that you guys can have up to nine members and nine alternates. First question is, how many members do you have now? And I think you kind of started answering my question in that what efforts are you guys doing to recruit more members if you don't have the nine?
Yeah, so right now, we, we only have six members, five, five or six members right now. It's not a strong number yet. And we, we've been trying to get more members, but it's been, and then the pandemic hit and it got even more difficult. So right now we're investigating new ways to do that. We've been discussing like social media use, contacting the schools, making a promotional video for the Junior City Council to send out to those schools that we're looking at in the Muckleshoot Tribe to find more members who are interested to join. Because I know a lot of people don't know about the Auburn Junior City Council. And we need to make ourselves more well-known for there to be more interest.
Thank you.
Councilmember J-Rod, just raise your hand?
Councilmember J-Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Waylon and Jonathan, great job on the presentation. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. First of all, do you know what was the history in having the teachers and the principals choose the city council, Junior City Council? And secondly, what are you going to do about promoting the city council members' application? And how's that going to happen?
So the history behind having principals choose the members, I'm not quite aware. I know it was a more recent thing. The Junior City Council is more recent, I believe. Either 2013 or 2014 was when the ordinance was proposed and passed. I'm just trying to recall why it was that principals and teachers choose the members. I know when I applied, I had a recommendation from my, one of my teachers and from my principal. So that's what I, the process I went through when I got appointed. And this was January of 2019 when I got appointed, but I started my application process before then. Not quite sure. And the, the way we're going to promote the applications is through social media. We're gonna, like emails. I know email's not very popular amongst us youth. So social media is a very key one. And then maybe a promotional video that we can send to the schools. I think that was what we're playing. Vice Chair Malanga, do you have anything to add to that?
Mayor Bacchus, just raise your hand?
Go ahead, Mayor Bacchus.
Thank you. Just the history of Junior City Council, there were a few reasons. First was that we were looking at what had already been established in some other cities through the National League of Cities. And we took some pages from their, their guidelines. And we also wanted to ensure that it was students who were involved, who hopefully were leaders within their schools. We wanted to ensure that they had grades where those grades wouldn't suffer by this extra work that we were putting on them. And so that's why we were asking for the recommendation from the principal. And it was, was the way for us to get the principals to understand what type of work was going to be expected of the students' representatives from each school. Uh, representatives from each school.
Councilmember Brown, raise your hand.
Councilor Brown, go ahead.
Good Deputy Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'd like to uh, ask both uh, Vice Chair. Uh, uh, Menzia as well as uh, Malanga. Uh, or Chair uh, Menzia and Vice Chair uh, Malanga. Uh, to uh, tell me, I mean, what is it that motivated you to get involved with junior city council? And where do you see this activity leading, you know, you in your life?
Vice Chair Malanga, would you like to take this one first?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, well, I first got um, involved with Auburn Junior City Council. When my um, A S B leader um, recommended me. And she uh, recommended me for the leadership position and told me about what Auburn Junior City Council is and how it connects. Um, the youth of Auburn to our city council. And um, it inspired me to get more involved in city government and government. And now I'm a part of LIAT, which is the Legislative Youth Advisory Council. Um, which has a similar, a similar platform uh, on a state level. And so if I hadn't been a part of Auburn Junior City Council, I may have never had the experience or the, uh, the desire to actually go. And um, try to be a part of more and more government roles involving youth. Um, so that's how it's inspired me and I hope I will continue on in um, community outreach. Because I think it's very important, um, especially with our youth right now during COVID, um, to get involved with our community.
I think what inspired me, uh, so first I ran for uh, A S B in my school. Uh, in sixth grade, I didn't make it the first time, but in seventh grade, I made it on to A S B. And then I discovered uh, near the end of my seventh grade year, the junior city council. And uh, during, right in the beginning of my eighth grade year, I applied um, for the junior city council. And was appointed in January of twenty nineteen. Uh, and I've been serving now for two years. It, this was my first step in a long journey of what I found really inspires me to do work like community work, public. Um, activism and uh, political work. That's, it just seems what really makes me happy and helping my community makes me happy. And I wouldn't be able to do that without the junior city council. I've been doing a lot uh, of community-based work, uh, working with organizations, creating organizations. Um, finding uh, new ways to get engaged, especially during um, COVID nineteen. That uh, really changed the way we look at activism. And then uh, the social climate of this year has really also highlighted the need for social change. Uh, in our communities, so junior city council was more of a, it was a guiding light. It was just there to open my doors to new uh, new activism, new levels of. Community outreach, community servitude. Uh, so that, that's the reason I joined.
Well, let me just say, I think we are very fortunate here in Auburn to have both of you young men involved in this. And that you're recruiting. Thank you so much for the work you do.
And uh, Councilor Brown, other council members, um, after a, a fairly long hiatus, I've been able to. Um, get engaged once again with the junior city council and our virtual meetings. And I have to tell you Chairman Z and Vice Chair Malanga are not only an intelligent, well-spoken young men. They have a vision for the future, which is outstanding for these young men. Uh, I think you're looking at uh, two city council members for the future and probably well beyond that as they go forward in their careers. I am so impressed with the work that they're doing on the junior city council, the thoughtfulness, uh, the engagement. Um, what they're looking at for helping us as a city council. Uh, look at future vision and improving the city from a youth standpoint. Is, is just not only welcoming, but really, really a, a opportunity for us to work together. With the youth in our community. Um, I have asked during our meetings that the junior city council. Make a quarterly report or presentation before us as a city council. Dana, I'm not sure if we decided to put it on a special focus area yet or not, but um, you know, we definitely want. Them to come in and engage with us because in times past, we've had our separations. Uh, we would be in Washington D C during N L C uh, congressional days. And uh, and once in a while, we would have the junior city council come before us, but other than that, we're, we're, we were separated. We're kind of distant. And this is going to start bringing us together and meld us together. So we can hear from them and they can hear from us and uh, work toward common goals as we see. What inspires the youth in our community. Um, these two young men and the rest of the junior city council. Are outstanding young citizens in our community. And I look forward to what they're going to do in their careers and their lives going forward. And uh, gentlemen, you did not get the grilling I was expected to give you, but uh, I think you did well tonight. So uh, any other comments from you?
I just wanted to say thank you again for the time and letting us come tonight and give our presentation. I don't know if Vice Chair Malanga has anything.
Uh, yes, I just want to say thank you to the city council and uh, Mayor Backus for your kind words. Um, and we really appreciate coming here and talking to you guys. Um, I can't wait to get involved um, and have this relationship with the city council because I think we can do amazing work in Auburn.
Excellent. Very good. Dana, anything to wrap up?
No, I, I don't want to uh, uh, interfere with their thunder and make their perform. I, they're fantastic kids and it's a joy to work with them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very good. Gentlemen, thank you again for uh, meeting with us tonight and we look forward to your future presentations before city council. And your action we'll have together as two working groups. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move on to resolution number five, five, six, three with Director Tate.
Uh, thank you. Uh, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Community Services Manager Joyce Scott for item five E and item five F.
Okay, so we'll move directly into both of those, I think, which is fine. So resolutions five, five, six, three, five, five, six, seven, and five, five, six, eight. Joy, take it away.
Thank you so much. Um, for the record, my name is Joyce Scott. I'm the Community Services Manager here for the city of Auburn. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I know that we have um, still a very full agenda ahead. So I will try to be as efficient with these two items as possible and move through them relatively quickly. Um, so I am before you once again to talk about our community development block grant funds. Um, I have been in front of city council a little bit more than usual this year. Because uh, we have some additional funds that have been made available. This evening though, we are going to start with a conversation about our regular entitlement uh, for twenty twenty one. So this is the usual process that we work through. Um, I'm hoping that everybody can see my screen shared here. Perfect. Okay. So every year, uh, the city council uh, adopts an annual action plan for our community development block grant dollars. Um, these are the roughly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars um, that we're anticipating for twenty twenty one. Uh, this year we, we received about six hundred and thirty one thousand and change. These funds support our city's housing repair program, um, public facility A D A improvements, some public services. And also some economic development activities. They're guided by our consolidated plan and annual action plans. Uh, and the council usually approves this every year in November. We're a little bit later than usual this year because we were waiting for some clarification on HUD's allowance of virtual public meetings. So um, we are a few weeks behind where we normally would be. Um, but the goal is to have this adopted and approved by city council prior to January one of our program year. So our community development block grant, as you're well familiar with by now, is um, a program that provides annual grants. From the Department of Housing and Urban Development uh, on a formula basis. So the formula is determined by Congress during their budget process every year. Um, it shifts ever so slightly um, each year and is based on uh, factors such as um, the age of our housing stock. Uh, our population, the percentage of poverty. Um, and HUD receives um, that data and gets it out to us each year, usually by about April. For um, for that year's program allocation. Um, the goal is for cities all across the U S to divide up, to develop viable urban communities. Um, as a part of receiving these funds, the projects that entitlement jurisdictions uh, fund must align with HUD's national objectives. Be eligible under the guidelines that HUD sets and also um, principally benefit low and moderate income persons within that community. There are a number of administrative requirements um, that anyone would expect uh, under the Department of Housing and Urban Development. For these community development block grant funds. Um, the first of which is our five-year consolidated plan. So our city council in twenty nineteen adopted our current consolidated plan, which is for the plan years twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. Um, that is a strategic planning document that guides all of our funding each year from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. Um, we conduct eligibility reviews for all of our uh, programs that we fund. And that can be um, as simple as um, verifying subrecipient ability to receive and contract with us. But it can also incorporate larger um, administrative requirements, which I'll get into a little bit um, later in the presentation. What we're talking about tonight is our annual action plan. So each year, um, the city council adopts an annual action plan that guides the investments for that program year of January one. To the end of December. Um, so this is for our twenty twenty one program year. We also come before you in um, usually March or April of each year to share about our performance evaluation report or the CAPER. Um, that's an annual report that we submit to HUD from the city of Auburn that shares our actual expenditures. Um, the outcomes that we worked towards, um, the targets that we met, um, anything that's not on track and why. And also other activities that the city engaged in um, to address issues such as affordable housing and community development. We conduct annual subrecipient monitoring for all of the um, subrecipients of our C D B G funding. Um, it, there are a number of requirements, not only for the city of Auburn, but also for any entity that receives funding from us. Out of our community development block grant fund. Uh, and we are responsible ultimately to ensure that those agencies have um, the capacity and the infrastructure. To be able to fully meet the requirements that HUD sets out. Um, there are a number of financial management administrative requirements that we are subject to and also project management. So um, some of our project management is, is overseeing contracts and ensuring that deliverables are met. Um, but it can also be incredibly complex, including things such as environmental reviews for um, our housing repair rehabilitation projects. Or our sidewalk A D A projects. Um, and we also have to address things like lead in our um, repair work to ensure that we're meeting federal requirements. There are a number of different types of activities that we can fund with community development block grant dollars. Um, including things like A D A improvements, home re- rehabilitation programs, uh, job creation and micro enterprise assistance. Homeownership assistance, planning and capacity building. And we can also set aside up to fifteen percent of our annual allocation towards public services. Um, this is a cap that HUD uh, monitors for every year to ensure that we do not exceed that. Um, if we ever were to exceed it, we do um, have to pay that back. So they are quite strict about that allocation. We also can set aside some for program administration. Um, as I mentioned, it requires quite a bit of staff capacity to oversee these funds. Um, HUD recognizes that and allows us to set aside up to twenty percent of our annual allocation towards that program admin. Some examples that we focused on in the city of Auburn for our community development block grant funds include um, primarily our housing repair program. So this is a program that's been identified as a priority by our city council and included in our consolidated plan and our strategic planning process. Um, also programs such as employment training and healthcare services for under and uninsured Auburn residents have been funded previously. As part of our public services funding. Um, we can, um. So HUD interestingly does not actually allow us to um, perform any kind of work on city-owned facilities. With the one exception of A D A improvements. So we are able to utilize some of our dollars to ensure that our community is more accessible to all of our residents. Um, an example of one of these projects was the um, bathrooms at Les Cove Park. Um, you may recall a few years ago, they were not nearly as nice as they are today. We were able to utilize um, some of our C D B G dollars to um, upgrade those bathrooms. And make sure that they were accessible to folks with disabilities in our community. Um, additionally, we uh, highlight side sidewalk projects every year. Um, adding things like curb ramps or missing sections of sidewalk to ensure that our community is walkable and safer. Um, and that our sidewalks are meeting those A D A standards. So under our consolidated plan that the council adopted in twenty nineteen for twenty twenty to twenty twenty four years. Um, there are three consolidated plan goals and those goals align with um, HUD's requirements and what they would like entitlement jurisdictions to focus on. Um, those include affordable housing, ending homelessness and community and economic development. And you'll see that each of those are quite broad and encompass a number of concepts within them. Um, that really are the um, the goals that steer all of the work that we do under our C D B G program. So for our twenty twenty one annual action plan, you have a full copy of it in your packet. Um, I apologize that the formatting of that document is um, based on HUD's requirements, so it's not the most reader friendly. Um, but um, you do have a lot of detail included in there. And I'm just going to cover a high-level overview of what we have included for twenty twenty one with our C D B G program. Uh, we, a lot went into drafting our annual action plan, so some of this work started back in March of this year. Um, you'll recall I um, provided some presentations to council earlier um, this year about our application process for human services dollars. That's actually a joint application process, so we receive applications for both the general fund human services dollars and our C D B G public services dollars. So that was made available to agencies in the community. Um, like I mentioned, there are pretty strict requirements and some infrastructure requirements of agencies, um, if they accept C D B G dollars. Um, they need to be able to track time in a particular way with their payroll systems. Um, there's client data requirements and we want to make sure that agencies that receive C D B G dollars are really set up for success. So when they apply, agencies indicate to us both if they would be willing to accept C D B jet, C D B D, C D B G dollars, excuse me. And also um, if they have experience with receiving federal funds in the past. Um, certainly, we always like to see when agencies have received these community development block grant funds. Um, but some other fund sources, um, such as community services or C S V G funds. Um, can provide similar kinds of requirements and agencies typically have the setup needed if they, if they are familiar with those funds. Um, so in September, recommendations for the C D B G funded public service activities were approved by our human services committee. That was after the very thorough review process that um, I discussed with you earlier this year. In October, um, on the twenty sixth, we held our first public hearing for the twenty twenty one annual action plan at the Human Services Committee. That was prior to the plan being drafted. Um, and then you'll recall uh, last week on December seventh, there was a public hearing held after the plan was drafted and made public. Um, at your city council meeting. Um, we also um, held a thirty-day public comment period um, with an ad in the Seattle Times. And a copy of our annual action plan draft available on the city website and by request. So at a glance, and again, um, all of this information is included in your packet in the full form as well. We're anticipating to receive about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. Um, this amount changes a little bit every year and it has been trending upwards in recent years. Um, but it's entirely dependent on the congressional budget. Um, so we expect to hear uh, closer to April, what our actual final allocation will be. Um, at this time, we try to set aside um, as close to that fifteen percent as we can each year. Um, as the council has indicated to um, staff previously and through the consolidated plan. That those public service activities are really important to be included each year. So we have ninety thousand dollars set aside within the six hundred and thirty thousand for public service activities. Um, within the twenty twenty to twenty twenty four consolidated plan, it was guided largely by the community and need, community needs assessment. That was conducted in twenty nineteen. Um, within that, one of the primary areas that was highlighted as a need was homelessness intervention and prevention. So um, within that consolidated plan, uh, council laid out a priority of funding public service activities. That specifically worked to um, address and prevent homelessness. So that guides the decision-making um, that the Human Services Committee had in uh, adopting recommendations. For public services that would be included in this action plan. Um, the two programs that were specifically included in this plan are Solid Grounds Housing Stability Project. Um, which is a time-limited rental assistance program that uses a progress. which is a time-limited rental assistance program that uses a progressive engagement model and supportive services, wraparound services to really support longer-term homelessness prevention and increased housing stability for households. It is a program that has served many Auburn residents previously, although we have not directly funded them with CDBG, CDBG dollars in the past. They do however, receive King County CDBG funds, so they're very familiar with those funds and experienced with managing them. In addition, there's also a recommendation for King County's Housing Justice Project at $15,000, which provides legal representation and support to low-income residents threatened with eviction. Again, really looking at that homelessness prevention goal that was set, set out by city council. You'll also see a fair housing public service activity set aside of $20,000. This would go out via an RFP in 2021. We didn't receive applications that would fit this specific purpose through our general human services application process, and so we will put out a more directed RFP for these funds. And this is because in 2019, at the same time as the consolidated planning process, the city undertook in partnership with King County, our analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. This is a document that's required by HUD that requires jurisdictions to analyze the ability of their residents to access fair housing within the community and analyze the work that's being done by cities to address this issue. Part of that work included testing, fair housing testing, and we saw that there was really a significant, almost 50% of the tests that were conducted resulted in discriminatory action towards the folks seeking housing. So we know that there are significant barriers to folks accessing housing in our community and especially for equitably accessing housing. So this was highlighted as something that needed to be included in future annual action plans and every year starting in 2021 of the consolidated plan. We also have the bulk of our funding annually is set aside for our housing repair program. This is a program that serves low-income Auburn households and predominantly seniors and folks with disabilities and helps folks remain aging in place in safe and affordable housing. So we anticipate at least 65 homeowners will be served through this program with these funds, although that might shift upwards. Some things are a little bit in flux right now due to COVID and I'll be talking about that in our next presentation. We are including $75,000 for sidewalk accessibility improvements. Typically, these, these projects are determined by a process within the Public Works Department where they have a priority list of sidewalks that need additional work. For HUD, we really prioritize residential areas that need those ADA improvements and have over 50% of that residential census blocked, block at or below 50% of our area median income. So we're really looking at low-income residential areas that need those ADA improvements. We've also included the administration dollars, which we do every year. This helps support the city staff. And in particular, these dollars really help fund the administration of our housing repair program so that we have that staff that can oversee that work. This is kind of the broad overview of our 2021, our 2021 Annual Action Plan. Again, the full document is in your packet. We currently have Resolution 5563. A copy of that is in your packet as well, drafted, which adopts the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. That would be scheduled to come before you next week at the December 21st, 2020 council meeting. Are there any questions on our 2021 plan before we move into the next set of CDBG?
So Joy, I have a quick question for you. On the administration cap, the 20, the 20%, so 115,000 is a little bit less than 20%. Is 115,000 what we determine the need to be? Or is it what's kind of after the other items have been calculated out? But that's the amount that goes into the, into the admin portion?
It's a little bit of both. So our, our staff can always utilize administrative funds. However, we usually set aside below the 20%. And within our contingency language, you'll also see that if we receive less, less funding than we would anticipate, that the first place we take it from is those admin dollars. So this is a plan that really tries to prioritize the services directly going out to community members and the projects that need to be accomplished. We try to set aside what's needed in order to best support those programs, but we also, that's the first place that we'll take funds from if we need to.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Councilor Sterns raises hand?
Councilor Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. That's a great presentation. I wanted to go back at the Solid Ground Housing Stability Project. And I just want, I, I want to ask a question. Does that, you know, help Auburn residents who are, you know, facing or maybe already evicted? But there's just a relationship between that project and evictions, which are, you know, something that's a real concern right now.
It does. Yeah. Thank you for asking that. It is specifically an eviction prevention program. So it does provide time-limited rental assistance that's kind of based on the needs of that individual household if they are facing eviction in order to keep them stably housed. It also provides some case management and other wraparound services as that household needs to be able to address any other issues that are impacting their housing stability.
Oh wow, that's great to hear. Thanks.
Any other questions for Joy Council? All right, Joy, go ahead.
If not, I will move into our next presentation, also related to our Community Development Block Grant Program, but this time focused on some, some amendments for our 2019 and 2020 plans related to coronavirus response in the community. So as I described earlier, you know, we're talking about these very specific CDBG dollars within these presentations. Our current annual allocation is $631,937. But for this presentation specifically, we're actually talking about a little bit of a different beast and that's our CDBGCV dollars. So you may recall I was in front of you in May to discuss these coronavirus response dollars that HUD made available to entitlement jurisdictions. We did get some really good news from HUD earlier this year in mid-September that there was going to be an additional round of funding that was made available to entitlement jurisdictions. So the CARES Act was initially passed and we received this initial allocation in May of 371,805. As you'll recall, the majority of that went towards eviction prevention rental assistance with some funding also going towards health services responding to COVID in the community. This is actually our third round allocation that we received notification of in the amount of 541,197. Interestingly, the $5 billion that was set aside in supplemental CDBG dollars as part of the CARES Act, there were three rounds identified. And the second one was for states to distribute to entitlement jurisdictions directly. So Washington State has received that dollar amount. However, they have not yet notified the entitlement jurisdictions of what they will be receiving. So we've received rounds one and three and we're still waiting on round two, a little bit out of order. In April, HUD released a document that shared with cities what flexibilities they would allow for these CDBG funds. So as we spoke about earlier, there are some pretty strict rules related to these, including that 15% cap for public services. There were some additional flexibilities in both allowing virtual meetings and some reduced timeframes for cities to be able to respond quickly to COVID needs. But also, they lifted the public service cap if cities were using CV funds specifically or if they reallocated any of their 2019 or 2020 funds. So this gave us an opportunity, particularly when we received this dollar amount close to the fourth quarter of 2020, to revisit our budget that we have for our Community Development Block Grant Funds this year and identify any funds that we might be able to purpose, to put, repurpose, to put towards coronavirus response. So we were able to identify 205,000 from our 2020 program year. The majority of those funds came from our housing repair program. As I mentioned, that program primarily serves a particularly vulnerable population for COVID that over 70% of the folks served in our housing repair program are seniors or folks with disabilities. And we have really endeavored in our housing repair program to come up with a set of procedures that keeps both our staff and our clients safe during this pandemic. We are responding to any immediate and critical health and safety interior needs through working with trusted contractors. However, we have put all other interior repairs on hold. So we hope that in the 2021 program year, we will better be able to go into folks' homes safely and be able to respond to non-urgent, non-critical housing repair needs. But as it is now, we have been limited to exterior needs and critical interior repairs. So that has left us with some cost savings in our 2020 program year that there's this opportunity to be able to put towards COVID relief in the community. So these funds have somewhat different rules than our regular CDBG allocation. So our annual allocation is this CDBGEN. It's our entitlement funding. These are CDBGCV dollars and for all intents and purposes, our reallocated 2020 funds also follow the same rules as the CDBGCV funds. So the CV funds are for the most part one time. So in our situation, they're kind of three time as we're waiting for these three separate allocations. But they are in addition to our regular annual allocation. We don't anticipate receiving any additional funding beyond these three rounds, although there are still bills being discussed at a federal level that might impact that. They can only be used in direct response to COVID-19. And this gets very granular in terms of how they apply this. So for something like an employment training program, for example, which we'll touch on a little bit later, it's not enough to show that somebody is in need of a job. That program also has to demonstrate that that need for a job is due to COVID-19. So they've lost their job because of COVID-19 or they need job retraining because of it. Perhaps they're in a, in a trade that is experiencing significant decline in the community. It also applies to things like rental assistance and other programs where the need of that service is not enough. It has to be a demonstrated need in a direct response to COVID-19. These funds require a substantial amendment to our annual action plan. And you actually see before you two amendments to an action plan and that is our 2019 Annual Action Plan. That encompasses the $541,000 and change of our third round allocation. And then the 2021 is that repurposed 205,000. There's an overarching application process that we went through for that full dollar amount though, so we wanted to bring it to you as one package this evening. That public services cap is waived just for these dollars. And there are those waivers available that the city has taken advantage of to reduce some of the public comment periods that otherwise would have been necessary. In particular, prior to releasing these funds, needing to have multiple public hearings and 30 days of published, published plans in, on our website and in our paper before taking any action. So this allows us to move much more quickly than we otherwise would have been able to. As I mentioned, when I was before you in May, our action plan amendment has to provide a plan for allocating all of our known CV funds. We can use some of those funds for planning and administration. We can't supplant any existing funding. So if the city has included something in its budget or historically has included something in its budget over the past three years, or it is an existing service, we can't use CDBGCV funds to support it. Unfortunately, for public services, we can only serve a new service, fund a new service or demonstrably increase or expand an existing service. Anything that we funded in the last three years would not be eligible to receive these funds. The city has to ensure also that there's no duplication of benefits and this is a new rule for CDBG funds. This is not something that's applied to our, our usual entitlement. And what it requires really is that at a staff level, that we are providing much more coordinated services. So ensuring that, that there's no duplication of benefits. For example, if we're funding multiple rental assistance programs, we need to ensure that there aren't other funding sources in the community that could meet that need before CDBG pays it. So it really requires us to work very collaboratively with the service providers that we fund and also work regionally as other cities are receiving these same funds and King County as well. So the process that we have for these dollars is that, as I mentioned in September, we received the notice of the CV funds. And then we also went through a process internally to identify that 205,000 that could be reallocated. At the October 26th meeting, our Human Services Committee approved a NOFA process for the combined 205,000 and round three allocation, which equaled $746,197 that we could make available for coronavirus response. We had a very quick turnaround from that October 26th meeting. We actually opened the NOFA on October 28th. Our, our funding process was only open for a little over two weeks and this is much shorter than what we typically do. However, we are somewhat confined by timelines right now as many of these flexibilities expire at the end of the year. So unfortunately, we had this very quick turnaround to be able to get these dollars out in the community and make use of the flexibilities that HUD allowed. As a result, you know, I'll touch on this on the next slide as well, but we really tried to make a very simplified truncated application process for agencies. And we also implemented additional eligibility review procedures and additional technical support to try and, and bring as many interested agencies as possible to the table within this application. Our Human Services Committee reviewed and scored all of the applications that were received and they voted on a recommended funding package for the 2019 and 2020 amendments. That is what is in your packet this evening and it was unanimously voted on by our Human Services Committee. We were especially appreciative of their work, having just undertaken many thousands of pages of scoring for our regular human services funding. Normally, we would have given them a break at this point, so we were really grateful for their work on this. Our draft plans were made available and out for public comment between December 2nd and 7th. That is that truncated five-day public comment period that HUD provided to entitlement jurisdictions in those COVID flexibilities. And then we are hopeful that within December, we can adopt resolutions approving these amendments and be able to get the dollars out in the community for January with contracts starting January 1 of 2021. So like I mentioned, our application period was, was quite brief. It was October 28th to November 13th. We created a simplified application and we actually created an application with our partner cities. So the City of Kent and City of Federal Way also received these same dollars, the same allocation based on their formula. And they were going out at the same time with these funds. And so we tried to align our application as much as possible with our neighbors so that agencies that had the capacity to accept these dollars and were familiar with them could use a very simplified application process and really reuse a lot of their, their data across cities if they were applying for a program that crossed city boundaries. Agencies had to complete an eligibility review with staff prior to submitting an application. And one of the things to note that's a little bit different this time is that we did require that city, that agencies that applied for these funding have experience with either Community Development Block Grant or Community Services Block Grant funding. And that's because while we are thrilled to have an additional almost three-quarters of a million dollars to go out in the community for coronavirus, we are working with the same staff capacity. And it really is up to us to ensure that all of the requirements are being met and that the agencies have everything in place in order to be successful. Because again, it's, it comes down to us and we are required to repay those dollars if anything goes wrong. So we wanted to ensure that with, you know, limited staff, we could get these dollars out quickly and with agencies that had the structure already in place to manage them. We provided technical assistance to agencies through the application process and we received just shy of a million dollars in applications. So the programs that are recommended for inclusion in our 2019 and 2020 amendments, I'm just going to touch on them briefly. And again, there's more detailed information, including the service unicoles and outcomes incorporated into those plans in your packet. But the YMCA submitted an application that was a partnership actually with the King County Housing Authority. That was for $75,000 to deliver food to seniors living in King County Housing Authority low-income housing communities in Auburn. living in King County Housing Authority low income housing communities in Auburn. So this is really responsive to both the need, the critical need for food access among our senior population as well as creating a safe point of access as more public health restrictions are instituted and as we see this virus spread continuing at a community level. The YMCA in, in its Nexus program also submitted an application that was included in these recommendations for $50,000 to support behavioral health services for young adults experiencing homelessness in the Nexus Arcadia program. So staff at that, at that program have really seen that the isolation and quarantining measures has had a particular effect on youth and young adults who are experiencing homelessness in the community, who are now even more isolated than they had been previously. They're really seeing the need for increased mental health services to be able to respond to that situation. We have included here Orion, a program for employment training for $50,000. So looking at both retraining folks for a new field of employment through both job training and job placement. Orion has submitted an application for a program that encompasses a number of services. So not just job training, but also ensuring that there's supportive services to help people stay, stay in their jobs, remain in place in those jobs and really be successful in the long term. There is a childcare assistance program included in, in this plan from the YMCA at an amount of $150,000. This is something that we've seen a really increasing need for in the community, a high community need for these childcare supports, especially as families are navigating and responding to remote learning structures. Our households in the community that have school-aged children that are living on lower incomes have been significantly impacted by these new structures and are really needing to see additional social and developmental support for their children to ensure that they remain school-ready and responsive as these procedures change and as hopefully folks get back to school in the next year. And then the, the largest allocation that was identified by the Human Services Committee for inclusion in these recommendations is for the YWCA's eviction prevention and career navigation program. And that's at an amount of almost $375,000. So this is actually a really unique program model that the Human Services Committee was really excited to see. So they combine eviction prevention rental assistance, making almost $300,000 of that available for direct financial assistance for that eviction prevention work, combined with career support and job training and placement. So really looking at the short-term housing stability need, but paired with long-term, long-term career services to ensure that folks have that longer-term stability as part of the program. You'll also see, we have a small amount of the, of the total that's available set aside for that administration and planning to help cover the staff time that will be associated with overseeing these contracts. And also included in this, because as I mentioned, we are waiting on that round two of funds. We included a contingency project of an additional eviction prevention program that was applied for by the YMCA at $300,000. So within this plan, this is laid out so that if any of the identified projects are unable to utilize the funds awarded, or if we receive that round two allocation from Washington State, this is a project that's ready to go, that has already gone through review that, that we can quickly pivot and fund with the next round of funding. So as I mentioned, you know, this, this process was very truncated, very quick. And we really tried to both be responsive to the needs of agencies and community as we worked to get, to get these dollars turned around through our Human Services Committee process and hopefully out the door as quickly as possible. So I'm happy to take any questions about those programs included or our 2019 and 2020 amendments that were in your packet.
Questions, Council?
Councilmember Sterns is ready to speak.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A question about the, the YWCA eviction program. So that, that's, I mean, that's wonderful. It's really fantastic. But, and I just wanted to clarify, that's for housing or residents in Auburn only? Is that right?
Yeah, so all of our CDBG dollars can only go to serve Auburn residents in Incorporated Auburn. So each of these programs is only proposing to serve Auburn residents with these dollars. For that program specifically, they would serve 100 households in, in Auburn with those funds and with those combined services.
Wow, that's fantastic.
And I think one of the other things to note, as I know that eviction prevention is really important and at the forefront of many council members' minds right now, is that as a, as a package, as we brought before you in our human services funding allocations, there were $200,000 of our general fund, human services funds that were set aside for eviction prevention in 2021. So in addition to these funds, we also have our regular human services funds that have also prioritized eviction prevention. And that's also in addition to the $55,000 of solid ground funds that I mentioned in our 2021 annual action plan and the $246,000 that the council made available through our first round of funding. So it is one of the areas that has been highly prioritized by the Human Services Committee and by staff as we've helped to draft these reports.
Other questions, Council? Just as a point of information, Council, Joy mentioned the food assistance program. And that's helps serves the seniors at the King County Housing Authority locations. There are 172 senior public housing units in Auburn. So a facility located directly across the street to the north of City Hall, one on Division and Third, and then the other is located behind the Goodwill store up on Auburn Way South. So those programs are definitely needed for those folks who basically have average annual incomes of less than $10,000 a year for the most part. Any other questions or comments, Council? Joy, thank you very much for your information. I'm sorry, Councilmember dropped me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Joy, I just want to say thank you for a great report. I always enjoy working with you folks and working with the Human Committee as well. You guys have put in so much work and so much effort to facilitate the people in our community. And I just want to say thank you to you and the Human Services Committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'll be sure to pass that along to our committee members. I know that they've worked very long and hard this year to, to make these resources available. And we're all really excited to have this amazing resource from HUD to put out into the community.
Great, Joy. Thank you again, Joy, for an excellent presentation. So Council, it is now almost 7:47. So that's like the plane. So let's go ahead and take a break and let's resume at 7:55. So we will recess until 7:55. Okay, Council, it is now 7:56. And we will call this meeting back to order. And for the Public Works and Community Development Discussion Items, I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So on our agenda, we are at 6A and end of year capital project status report Director Gow.
Thank you. So I'm actually going to turn this over to Ryan Von Drack to provide a year-end report and also a look ahead at what you might see coming in 2021 on our capital program.
Okay, I did not realize I still had, did not realize I still had my Civics Academy thing up there, but that'll have to do for today. So good evening, Council. For the record, I am Ryan Von Drack, Capital and Construction Engineering Manager. We are here to provide our annual end of reports on the status of the city's capital projects. So let's get started with some general statistics for projects that were or are in construction. Twenty-three projects entered or either began construction in 2020 or continue with construction from the previous calendar year. The approximate value of those projects is about 32 million. That 32 million is preserving or reconstructing about 23 lane miles of pavement. It is replacing over 12,500. It is replacing over twelve thousand five hundred linear feet of water mains and appurtenances. It replaced seven large meter vaults or seven large meters and their vaults and is replacing over eighty-six hundred linear feet of storm drain pipe and appurtenances. The thirty-two million is also replacing over four hundred and fifty linear feet of sanitary sewer pipe. It is upgrading the electrical components within twelve sanitary sewer pump stations and installing nearly four miles of new signal communicate communication infrastructure and installing five rectangular rapid flashing beacons or RFB pedestrian crossings. RFBs are the pedestrian actuated flashing signs that warn vehicles when someone's crossing. And lastly, the thirty-two million is installing three new dynamic message signs. These are the electronic signs that allow the city to to display variable messages to the traveling public. It is converting two thousand eight hundred and fifty citywide city-owned streetlights to LED fixtures, installing over sixty-five hundred linear feet of new or replaced sidewalks and upgrading a number of curb ramps to meet Americans with Disability Act requirements. And it's also lengthened both ends of the runway at the airport by four hundred and forty-one feet. So what ways are you able to stay informed with all the activities that were going on throughout the year? One way is through the capital project status report that is emailed out to council at the beginning of every month. We also provide updates to council on a quarterly basis through presentation, just like we're doing this evening. We also have the interactive project mapping tool. The mapping tool is located on the city's website by navigating to it under the Public Works tab, under the Business heading on the main page, or it can be viewed directly by selecting the link in the PDF of this presentation. The photo on the right is a screenshot of what the mapping tool looks like. This tool is interactive and allows you to select individual projects and view general information about them, including who to contact if you have questions. And then we also have an interactive traffic advisory mapping tool. The traffic advisory mapping tool is also located on the city's website and can be found by selecting the Traffic Conditions tab under the Business heading on the main page. The photo on the right is a screenshot of what this mapping tool looks like. When a project impacts a roadway or pedestrian pass, we will post an advisory to the site indicating what the impacts are and for how long. You can sign up for the advisories on the city's website. When you sign up, you'll get an email anytime we post a new advisory to this mapping tool. So in looking at some of the current status that we have going on, the capital projects team is currently working on thirty-six active projects totaling approximately sixty million in total project value. Of the thirty-six projects, twenty are in various stages of the design phase and sixteen are in some form of the construction phase. This graphic is an illustration that shows the total number of projects bid the last four years against the total project costs for those projects that are in construction. So in looking at this year, which is the last bar on the right, we have bid a total of seventeen projects to date at a value of approximately twenty-one point three million dollars in construction costs or total project costs. We're actually opening bids on a project tomorrow, the DEDUP meter phase two project. And then we'll add to that list. So now I want to transition to some projects that are coming up, a few projects that you will see enter the construction phase in early 2021. And then a few projects that are a little ways out in terms of construction, but we will begin design and are excited about the opportunities these these projects provide. The first project we're going to talk about is the Second Street Southeast Preservation Project. That project is on page one forty-four of your packets or page thirteen of nineteen in CPS report. Last year, we received a grant from the Transportation Improvement Board for almost six hundred thousand to help construct Second Street Southeast from A Street Southeast to Auburn Way South. That's directly across from the Safeway. In addition to the roadway reconstruction, the project will also include some street lighting components. It will also include about four hundred and fifty feet of sanitary sewer improvements, some storm drainage improvements. It will upgrade curb ramps to meet ADA, including the crosswalks. The project is currently in design and is expected to enter the construction phase early next year. Then we have the Lakeland Hills Way Preservation Project. This project is on page one forty-five of your packets or page fourteen of nineteen in the CPS report. This project is completing a patch and then a grind and overlay of the pavement on Lakeland Hills Way from Fifty-seventh Drive Southeast to Lake Taps Drive Southeast, just behind the Hagan Shopping Center. The project will also upgrade curb ramps to meet ADA and then replace the impacted vehicle detection loops that are at the intersection of Lake Taps Parkway and Lake Hills Way. This project is in design right now and we're looking at going to construction also in early 2021. The next project we have is the M Street Southeast Sidewalk Improvement Project. This project is on page one forty-four of your packets or page thirteen of nineteen in the CPS report. Last year, we also received a grant from the Transportation Improvement Board in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand to help fund this project. The project will reconstruct missing sections of sidewalk along M Street Southeast from Eighth Street Southeast to approximately Auburn Way South. And the project will also include upgrading curb ramps to meet ADA. And this project is currently in design twenty twenty or has been in design in twenty twenty and we look to go to construction in early twenty twenty-one. The picture you see there is looking south on M Street Southeast and so you can see there's no sidewalks on either side of the roadway there. Next project. So this is the Lee Hill Road Bridge Deck Preservation Project. This project is on page one forty-seven of your packets or sixteen of nineteen in the CPS report. This project will complete a grind and overlay of the bridge deck on Eighth Street Northeast or Southeast Three Twentieth Street, right before you get up the Hill Road Southeast. We received a federal grant for almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will pay for this brand overlay of this bridge deck and that project is in design right now and will go to construction in early twenty twenty-one. Then we have another bridge deck preservation project. This is on the Third Street Southwest Bridge Approach. This is on page one forty-eight of your packets or page seventeen of nineteen in CPS report. The picture you see there is looking east from the freeway. And this project will do grind and overlay of the bridge decks. There's three locations shown on the map there. One over the C Street Southwest Crossing, the next one over the BNSF Bridge or the BNSF Railway and then A Street Southwest. This project also received a grant for almost six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This project is also currently in design and we expect to go to construction in early twenty twenty-one. Okay. So then we have a couple of projects that are not currently in the capital project status report, but you will see them soon. And these are the ones we wanted to highlight that we're a little excited about. First, we have the Fourth Street Southeast Improvement Project that is from Auburn Way South to L Street Southeast. This project is almost a five million dollar project where we received a grant, another grant from the Transportation Improvement Board last year, or actually last month for just over one point seven million to rebuild this critical arterial roadway. And we're excited about partnering partnering with them again to complete another project. This project is completing a roadway preservation and reconstruction effort on Four Streets. So partial Brian overlay and then partial roadway reconstruction. That includes seventeen hundred linear feet of water improvements, eight hundred and eighty linear feet of sewer improvements will replace sections of sidewalk to meet ADA compliance. And it will also include some street lighting components. The design is being or will begin in twenty twenty-one and we expect to go to construction in the year twenty twenty-two. The next project we have is the Regional Growth Center Access Improvement Project. This is a two million dollar project that is in partnership with Sound Transit. Sound Transit is partnering with us with about one point six million towards this project. The project, this picture is looking southbound on Auburn Avenue at Third Street Northeast Intersection. But the project will include a new northbound left turn lane onto Third Street Northeast from the northbound direction, which currently doesn't exist today. It would also include pedestrian improvements, which is a new north-south crosswalk across Third Street Northeast that also does not exist today. And some additional pedestrian improvements. And then we'll also make some signal modifications to the that combined signal that's at Fourth Street Northeast and Auburn Way North intersection. Make some signal modifications there to make that function a little bit better. That design is expected to begin in twenty twenty-one with construction not taking place until twenty twenty-three. And then the last project we have today is the R Street Southeast and Twenty-Ninth Street Southeast Intersection Improvement Project. And so it's an intersection improvement project, but it's actually including the corridor, R Street corridor from Twenty-Second Street Southeast down to Thirty-Third Street Southeast. This is a five million dollar project that will construct a new signal at Twenty-Ninth Street Southeast Intersection. And it will also include pavement rechanalization and an additional southbound through lane on R Street. So this this picture is looking northbound on R Street about where Game Farm Park or Cross Street is a Game Farm Park there on the right. The southbound direction has a heavy, heavy traffic movement in the evening commute. And so the additional southbound lane for this project will be a significant help for this corridor. Design of this project is expected to take place in twenty twenty-one and construction not taking place until twenty twenty-four. So that is the the year wrap-up of what the capital projects team has been doing throughout the year. And if you have any questions, let me know. There's also the CPS report that was included in the packets.
So council members, does anyone have a question? Let me just say this. I know that if we had former council member Bill Pelosi, he would be so happy and excited to see the Fourth Street Southeast Road Project. So that that makes me smile. Does anybody? Yes.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Yeah, thank you Chairman Brown. The I was actually looking at the capital project status report. And I just had a question about the I gotta find it now, but it's on Thirty-Seventh Street, the culvert.
Yes.
And I was wondering if you could just, just because is that Mill Creek? Is that where the culvert is?
It's adjacent to it's in front of it's in a roadside ditch in front of a PSD property.
Oh, okay.
Into it's all part of the Mill Creek area there, but it's not the culvert that's associated with it is not directly in Mill Creek.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Trump Manuel has raised her hand.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Yeah, mine is exactly what you just made that statement about Councilmember Bill Pelosi. He would be so, so excited to finally see Fourth Street getting started. And also on the road. The last one you were just talking about, M Street and Twenty-Nine, how much did you say is going to cost to do the improvements on that?
That project is the you're referring to R Street Southeast and Twenty-Ninth Street Intersection?
Yes, yes.
We have it slated for I mean, we're it's preliminary numbers, but it's about five minutes. That's how much is currently.
Okay, because that is very much needed. I know that I've been a couple of times I've been in that traffic trying to get to Lee Hill and it's just a mess there at five o'clock. And so it's very much needed. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you. I'm double dipping. I have just a question about the M Street sidewalks. And so after this is done, how much of M Street will remain? I guess how much on the sidewalks of M Street will remain?
Do that project now. So back on your slides, it's completing the sidewalk. All there will be a sidewalk on both sides of the road from Eighth Street Southeast to Auburn Way South. It is completing whatever is not there today. So I believe actually north of eighth, it's all in. So it would complete the entire quarter. I don't know if you.
That's fantastic.
I'm Ryan. I'm going to provide one correction there. I believe we have sidewalk on the west side from eighth all the way to Auburn Way South. It will have sidewalk on the east side from twelfth to Auburn Way South. We'll still be missing a piece between eighth and twelfth on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Von Drack. We will now turn to item six B, ordinance number sixty-seven sixty-three with Director Tate.
Good evening. And for ordinance number sixty-seven sixty-three, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Crum, who is our Development Services Manager and the city's building official. Jason will jump in and do a presentation while he's maybe getting that loaded on the screen for some screen sharing. I'd also like to call out that Dave Castleman, who's with Valley Regional Fire Authority, is also present. And while not providing the presentation, he may be consulted if there are questions that are needed with respect to some of the fire code related matters that VRFA helped the city with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
All right. Thank you for that introduction, Jeff. And thank you Deputy Mayor, City Council Members and Mayor. My presentation tonight is on the building code update and it's kind of in two parts. The first is just a real quick, I'll try to move pretty quickly, an overview of the the code updates as adopted by the state and amended by the state. And then the second part will be the specific Planning Commission recommendations for City Council to adopt amendments for our own municipal code for this effort. So I will get right into it here. So just a reminder, we are talking about the two thousand and eighteen International Code. So just a reminder, we are talking about the two thousand and eighteen International Code that's published by the International Code Council. They, it's part of their triennial building code update cycle. So these were published in two thousand and seventeen. The state legislature, through the work of the State Building Code Council, has adopted these codes already and the state amendments there too. And that occurred in two thousand and nineteen. These updates and amendments were scheduled to go into effect July of this year, twenty twenty. However, due to COVID nineteen impacts, that effective date has been postponed into February of next year. So less than a couple of months from now. This slide just represents what our state code is as adopted by the state. The list on the left are, those are kind of external published documents. And then the two on the right, the state energy codes, those are published by the the state and specific to our state. And I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute. So just in general, I won't, I won't talk, speak to all of these points. But just for reference, here are some of the significant updates in the international building code. There's some new specifications for medical gas, storage and conveyance. So that may have some implications in the future for hospital expansion or redevelopment. There's some sections on higher education laboratories, which may be a benefit to Green River College if they intend to extend their laboratory facilities in the future. The building code update also included a requirement for carbon monoxide alarms kind of retroactively for any alteration of an existing institutional or residential occupancy. So so more of those kind of commercial residential kind of applications where you have a lot of people kind of sleeping or occupying a single building. That's similar to the cooking facility requirement. So we have a lot of people gathering and living some additional fire and life safety kind of requirements. In the international residential code, I didn't find there to be really too many significant updates. There was some additional requirements related to providing access pathways on rooftops where solar panels are going to be installed. So just allowing some opportunity to safely traverse the roof, you know, for maintenance or for kind of rescue purposes. And then the the deck, the prescriptive deck design sections was almost doubled. So for homeowners who want to construct a deck kind of per the prescriptive code, there's some additional guidance here that I think will be beneficial. So for the state amendments, so these are, you know, more restrictive than typically than the the international codes themselves. For the international building code, one I wanted to specifically highlight here for a multi-story building that has a required emergency egress stairwell. That stairwell is required to be pressurized so that when a particular floor is opened that may have smoke or fire, the air kind of flows out of the stairwell and into that floor rather than being sucked in to to keep that stairwell clear for, you know, escape and emergency rescue operations. That pressurized kind of fan system is required to be on a separate power supply for standby power. And the state amendments with this update is prohibiting that connection to be to the 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 power main essentially. So I just bring that up because I know we have two buildings in town that did opt to utilize that option in the past and have that direct connection. But going forward in the future, those types of developments will need to have a either a battery backup or more likely a generator to supply that that standby power. For the residential state amendments, there seem to be quite a few changes related to kind of additional sleeping areas, basements, attics, lofts, ADUs with within duplexes. So just kind of, it seems like an effort to find ways, you know, safely to provide guidance to allow, you know, more density within residential structures, if you will. The state is going to require sprinkler systems for townhomes for the first time, specifically for townhomes that have more than four units connected. That was not the case in the past. That hasn't been the case, but now that will be. And then a new one here, heat detection will be required in all attached garages. So any new single-family residents will have that that heat detector, which is more appropriate for a garage because a smoke detector, you know, potentially could be set off by car exhaust or debris, dust, that sort of thing at times in a garage space, kind of depending on how it's being used. So so that will be required interconnected to the alarm system within the house, the smoke detectors, just to let residents know, occupants know that, you know, something, something's happening in the garage that needs attention.
Councilor Sterns, sorry, Councilor J Rogers raised his hand.
Sure.
Quick question on the heat detection on new garages.
Yeah.
When for homes that's currently occupied right now, and if they want to sell it, would that be a consideration when it comes to selling the house?
It would not be a requirement. So it's not a retroactive code requirement. It would just be for new garages or if potentially if in addition to a garage were being constructed or maybe a conversion of that garage was proposed.
Okay. The other question I have is going back one slide. Occupancy class marijuana processing. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Sure. So this was put into the state amendment specifically because the the building codes, the, you know, at the national level, international level, they don't really identify marijuana uses in the code. You know, because it's, you know, not, it's only legal in in certain states. So State of Washington added this, I think, just to clarify that if there's a marijuana processing use, the specific occupancy class that that would apply to would be an F1, which is a is a factory use. So it provides guidance to architects and, you know, those who administer the code in knowing kind of how to classify that that type of use, which is otherwise not really defined elsewhere.
Okay, so it's more for industrial processing than we're talking about?
Yeah, so it's a commercial factory type use. But so so that kind of proposal, the typical factory building code requirements would apply to it.
Okay, thank you very much.
True. And then this is a new appendix, brand new to the two thousand and eighteen code, related to tiny housing. So for if if someone were to propose a tiny house construction, there are a lot of elements of those homes that do not meet standard residential code requirements. The minimums for ceiling heights and stair with stair risers, that sort of thing. So by the state adopting this optional appendix, there's some flexibility and and some allowances for kind of that alternative dwelling space. So so I think it's a good alternative that the state adopted that. And then finally, the big with the, I guess, the the updates that we're hearing, a lot of concern from the development community, home builders, contractors, is the energy code update. So just to, you know, briefly provide a little bit of context, the state adopted a essentially a goal back in two thousand and nine. And the goal, the metric was essentially to, for the next eight energy code updates every three years, when we get to twenty thirty, the goal is that a home that was built after that twenty thirty code, if you compare it to a home built twenty five years prior in two thousand and six, the new home would use only thirty percent of the energy that the two thousand and six home used. So with the two thousand and eighteen updates, we're sort of over halfway there as far as, you know, the the conservation and energy use goal. So it represents a, you know, forty five percent less energy use than the two thousand and six home. The way that the state has has kind of characterized it, though, is that the prior updates were, you know, somewhat considered low-hanging fruit and maybe more easy to meet, and that these next series of adoptions, including this one, are going to be more challenging to developers. So the energy code, you know, it gets fairly complex. It's getting more and more complex with each update. So, you know, there there are a lot of different methods to gain energy compliance for residential projects. The, you know, I guess you could say to simplify, the amount of energy options that are required nearly doubled. So developers kind of have to put twice as many energy solutions into their construction. And then the way that they meet the energy code criteria also has gotten more restrictive. So I I think that there's still a lot to be determined as to what the full impacts are. I've heard a couple of different estimates that for a typical single-family home, that the financial impacts, I've heard estimates from eleven thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars and even beyond. So, you know, we're talking potentially tens of thousands of dollars more in costs for a home that's built, you know, February first versus January thirty first. So certainly some impacts with regards to, you know, the the housing issue and, you know, the the cost, cost of those structures. The same can be said for, you know, commercial multifamily construction. We have a developer in town that I spoke to that has a multifamily project under construction right now, who shared with me that they have been kind of analyzing the the new energy code updates for for the entire year essentially. And they 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 believe that their elements that they've incorporated in their past construction, that they will not be able to achieve compliance with the energy code on going forward. So it it just means that they have to explore other methods of testing and types of equipment that's installed, appliances and methods of construction. That I think there's a, there's still a lot of unknowns, and we probably will. There'll be a transition period, I think for sure, over the next year or two, as developers kind of get used to meeting those compliance goals. So moving on to Auburn City Code. So the these in the packet, we've got a copy of draft ordinance sixty seven sixty three, which is starts on page one sixty seven of your packet. And these are the recommended changes that have come from Planning Commission, having gone through that process in their public hearing that are being proposed to City Council for adoption, potentially at the January fourth meeting in order to get these adopted in time for the the state's effective date of February first. So our code, Buildings and Construction is is title fifteen. And I'll just run through some of those significant changes. Many of the changes you see in there are really minor in nature and are kind of housekeeping items, updating references to the to the code titles, department and the two thousand and eighteen codes. There's a series of revisions upfront, which propose no code language changes. They're just reorganizing some of our enforcement code sections and the amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code, just to be more consistent with how our other code amendments are organized in code. And then there are a series of changes recommended to combine two separate chapters that we currently have related to fire code and the fire code amendment. So just kind of putting those into one section for just for ease of of finding. In, I guess, this would be, I think, page one eighty two of the packet. There's some proposed language related to permit refunds and just adding some clarification on a step that previously is not included in code in between permit approval and permit issuance. So just adding some clarification that projects are eligible for refund during that period and and what their refund amount eligibility is. And then there are also some proposed changes to clarify the the amount of time that an applicant is eligible to request a refund for an issued permit. Because right now it specifies three hundred and sixty days from expiration. And permit expires, it's at least a hundred and eighty days from permit issuance, but it could be even longer. So as long as a permit continues to be under construction and doesn't go on hiatus, the permit expiration date continues to be extended out. So the proposed changes here are to tie the refund request expiration date, if you will, to the permit issuance. So typically, a permit is, if it's, if it's not going to move forward, you know, generally, that's going to be known during that first hundred and eighty day timeframe. There's some proposed language. Our code currently allows us to you know, delay the final inspection and certificate of occupancy for a project that requires some public improvements to be repaired or replaced. So in the event that something's damaged during construction, our code does require that those are fixed before that step occurs. So the there's some proposed new language in there to also just call out that required public improvements that are necessary to support a proposed development also should be completed prior to a certificate of occupancy. And Community Development works very closely with Public Works to ensure those public improvements are in place generally before a certificate of occupancy. So having this in code, I think, is helps the developer kind of be prepared for for that process. The, we still have the opportunity, the flexibility to provide a temporary certificate of occupancy when construction projects are not a hundred percent complete. So we will still be able to kind of exercise that discretion. There are a series of changes related to chapter five of the fire code, which have to do with fire access. And those are, those changes are intended to just clarify that. So there are some conflicts between the fire code and the City of Auburn Engineering Design Standards. And these changes just make it clear that the engineering design standards are the ones that govern. So, you know, it's, it's better for a developer to reference our design standards rather than the fire code for what our public road requirements are going to be. Based on some concerns raised in the community. Based on some concerns raised in the community in the past, recently, we, there are some recommended changes. Here for some additional safety measures for petroleum tanks that fuel. You know, homes or buildings. So the recommendation here is. Earthquake shut off devices and requiring tanks to be secured. In the event of, of an earthquake, hopefully they, they'll provide more stability. And the, so these are requirements that are not included in, in the code right now. So these are more restrictive and they are not proposed to be retroactive. But that based on the proposal, they would be required for an existing tank that undergoes a. A modification or a replacement or the building that it supports goes undergoes some kind of change of use. And then finally, there's a fairly significant or lengthy section, I should say, of updates proposed, starting on page. One ninety eight of the packet. So there are sixteen pages of specific code amendments to the section in the fire code on emergency responder radio coverage. And those sections speak to when police or fire responding to a situation and they enter a building. How that building is built, the materials it's made out of, the topography, the geography around it, other buildings can interfere. It can all impact or affect the ability for that emergency responder to be able to communicate out. So these sections are, are specific to making sure that, you know, when someone goes in the building, that they're able to, you know, communicate out to let people know. You know what's happening in the building and vice versa. So this, the sections as proposed were drafted and created through. A regional task force for King County that included Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network concern. It included local sheriff's offices, fire marshal's office, our own valley regional fire authority was part of that conversation. And they, as a result of, of their discussions and meetings. They had drafted these sixteen pages as proposed template for really all jurisdictions in King County to adopt. So that. You know, essentially our code will have everything that a developer designer needs to know how to design, construct, test. And maintain and connect these types of systems, just so they're, they're, they've got all the information up front to make sure it's going to connect to our system. And. As if, if a developer were to go by what's in the fire code right now, they, they, they might be able to build a system that does not connect. And, and we don't want them to kind of have to go through and, and waste that effort. So that's what those, all those pages are about. And then lastly, there's a proposal for firefighter air replenishment system. And that is a, it's an appendix that appeared in the two thousand and fifteen fire code. And really, you know, to just to simplify what it is, it's a, it's a air distribution system in a high rise building. That allows firefighters that are in that building during an event to be able to refill their air tanks. So, so right now in a emergency response situation when there's, you know, a lot of smoke. And fire in a building, the firefighters will have these air tanks to, you know, so they can kind of breathe safely as they navigate through. That building and those tanks, you know, really only last a matter of minutes, you know, fifteen minutes or less potentially at times. So there's a lot of energy and effort expended into getting emergency responders just to manage replacing those tanks. Lot of inefficiencies, you know, coming out of the building, sending people in, you know, just to provide tanks to the, the responders that are in there. So the, this system would really kind of replace that need in those circumstances. And it is specifically proposed for high rise buildings and that's defined in the, the building code. Typically that is going to be buildings that are nine stories or higher. And just for context, in the city of Auburn right now, we do not have any buildings that would meet this criteria. Even the most recent building. You know, south of city hall would not have met this criteria. Also, our zoning code has a height limit currently that also would. Generally not allow a building that would be defined as a high rise. So this is really more proposed as a kind of a proactive measure of adoption. As we see kind of other jurisdictions in the region, Bellevue, Tuckwillaw, Renton, starting to adopt those because they see, you know, some of these more vertical. Buildings that are, you know, becoming a challenge for, for responders.
Councilmember Malinga has raised her hand?
Yep.
Councilmember Malinga.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to a slide you had on the. Fire services feature. I think it's like two slides up from that. Um, I think you had said that the Auburn engineering design standards weigh more heavily than the. Fire code in that if there was a decision to be made, it would default to the Auburn engineering design standards. Is that because the standards are stricter or, and then can you give an example of when this happens?
Sure. So it could be, it could be both, to be honest. So there are cases where the Auburn design standards are more restrictive. And so certainly we want to make sure that developers are, are focused on, on that. There are times when it is actually less restrictive. And one example of that would be public alley, alleyways. So we have alleys in town where our public right of way is only maybe sixteen feet wide. Or less even in some cases, however, the fire standards require a minimum width of twenty feet. So kind of in that case, it's less restrictive because we just don't have the, the right of way to be able to provide. The kind of required minimum per the fire code. And then just the reason we can be less restrictive, usually we can't be less restrictive than the adopted code. The reason that's applicable here is because the state specifically has not adopted those sections. So they, they have not adopted them. They don't recognize them and they leave that some of those design criteria up to the local jurisdictions.
Thank you so much for answering my question. I appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, so I know this was a lot of information in a short amount of time and it, on top of an already full agenda. So I appreciate your patience and your time tonight, but happy to answer any other questions.
Does anyone on the council have a question? I guess I would have just one question on the propane tank issue. The change of use for the building being supported by the propane tank. Could you give me a couple of examples of what that might be?
Sure. So. So the, the building code specifies, you know, when there's a change of use and that's usually specifically tied to the occupancy class. So for single family residential, there, there would only be really a change of use if. It was converted into maybe a, a use that was like a home based business type situation. For a more of a commercial application, that could be, you know, the. You know, the, the example right next door to the annex where, you know, we had a, a bank that, you know, underwent the tenant improvement. And it's now a, you know, retail convenience store. So that would be considered a, a change of use that is specifically noted in the building code as going from. One designation to another by that occupancy class designation.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have a question? Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is section six, item C, which is ordinance sixty seven ninety nine. And again, Director Tate.
Thank you. And for ordinance sixty seven ninety nine, I'm going to turn it over to Planning Services Manager Jeff Dixon to walk through planning commissions recommending.
Jeff, I'm sorry, we're not able to hear you. We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager, and I'd like to share my screen and provide you a presentation on ordinance sixty seven ninety nine. So if you can bear with me while I get this presentation before you. Okay. Is that appearing okay?
Jeff, you have it on the preview mode.
Okay.
I believe it's your other screen you need to share. There you go.
Okay. Okay, I'm here tonight to provide a presentation on ordinance sixty seven ninety nine. It's the city's franchise and wireless codes project and it begins at page two fifty one of your packet of three hundred and sixteen pages. If it's so. So this is the second part of a subject that was introduced and discussed at your last study session on November twenty third. The reason it's done in two parts and is a separate and companion ordinance is because. The two titles that are subject of this ordinance required, which is title seventeen and eighteen, required review. And a public hearing and a recommendation by the city's planning commission. So while this is a franchise and wireless code, it does. Deal primarily with the city's wireless regulations that apply to sections seventeen and eighteen. And kind of, I'd like to go into a little bit of background on that. The city's wireless regulations apply to a broad range of technologies and devices that transmit data over the air rather than hardwired. The city's wireless communication facilities may be either located in public rights of way or outside of the right of way on public or other private property. And where this breaks down or where is divided is that the wireless communication facilities that are located in public right of way are generally those that are addressed through right of way use permits. Franchise agreements and other legal contracts that administered by the city's public works department. For wireless communication facilities that are located outside of the right of way, they're typically regulated through the local zoning ordinances and building code regulations. Similar to a, in another private utility, but because of the uniqueness of wireless communication facilities, they're given separate treatment in the zoning regulations. And these are primarily administered by the city's community development department. So because of this division, the city is considering changes to seven titles of the city code. The first five titles were discussed at your last meeting and are not subject to review by the city's planning commission. But titles seventeen, the city's subdivision code or land adjustments and divisions. And titles eighteen zoning do require the planning commission review and process. The city has been regulating wireless communication facilities in the zoning code and to a lesser extent in the subdivision code. Since approximately nineteen ninety seven. And wireless communication facilities that we're tip, talking about are typically non-staff facilities for the transmission of wireless communications. And generally consist of an antenna array, an equipment facility and a support structure, whether that just be a fenced enclosure or a small building. Or a small above ground vault. So you're likely familiar this with cell towers, but they also can be mounted on tops of buildings. Or added to other types of features like a ball field lighting or water towers or those types of facilities or structures as well. Another category of wireless communication facilities that the city has already been regulating is micro cells. And these are typically shorter facilities and are limited to it, to a certain restricted size of antenna. I want to talk a little bit about the process that we've been following for these code changes. The city contracted for the services of, of a Kenneth Feldman, of Kissinger Feldman. An expert in the industry of local government telecommunications law. And staff has been working with Mr. Feldman over the last year, reviewsing, reviewing and revising and researching. Proposed changes to those seven titles of code. As I mentioned, the chat titles to, the changes to the first five titles. Were reviewed by Pub Works at your last meeting and this meeting focuses on ordinance sixty seven ninety nine and specifically the changes to seventeen and eighteen. And a little bit more about the process, the planning commission reviewed these changes to titles seventeen and eighteen. The topic was introduced at their October meeting. They scheduled a public hearing for November fourth and considered public comments at that meeting. Also at that meeting, the planning commission closed the record and continued the public hearing to their subsequent meeting. A second meeting of the month on November seventeenth. And at staff's request, again, the planning commission continued a public hearing to their December eighth meeting. And at this meeting, planning commission concluded their deliberations and recommended approval. The public hearing was. Continued on two occasions at staff's request in order to give staff time to consider the public comments that had been received. I want to talk about a little bit about the purpose of these code changes. With the evolving technology and the increased usage of wireless communication devices by the population. Wireless antenna facilities have been given special consideration by federal regulations. Those primary federal law changes are the middle class tax relief and job creation act of two thousand and twelve. And the associated federal communications order in two thousand and fourteen for acceleration of broadband deployment order. There have been further or follow on federal guidance consisting in two thousand and eighteen of the federal communications. Order issuing a two part declaratory ruling and third report and order with the intent to streamline the deployment of fourth generation. And fifth generation mobile communication infrastructure. This two part declaratory ruling and the report provides for a new type of wireless communication facility. Preferred to as small sector cell technology or as the city is using in its code language as small. Wireless communication facility. And these are technology to increase signal coverage. Generally consists of use of smaller antennas of a smaller size and not mounted as high. But at facilities that are more closely spaced and I'll show you some images of such facilities in just a moment. Typical small cell facility is between twenty five to forty five feet in height and most. and most commonly affixed to existing utility poles or light poles and requires aerial or underground line to access power and fiber in order to transmit the signals. These are some images of small cell facilities that exist in other jurisdictions. So you can see there are smaller boxes and antennas mounted to utility poles, but they can be a variety of installations either in rights-of-way or on other property, public or private, outside of the right-of-way. This slide shows the definition for small cell wireless facilities. And this definition is actually contained in the code sections that the city council reviewed at their last meeting and specifically in Chapter 20.14. But it refers to them being of a, not mounted as high and generally a smaller antenna size. And this is the way the technology is going and there's many companies that are adapting or pardon me, adopting this small wireless communication facilities. I'd like to talk a little bit about the key provisions of these federal laws that are part of the scope of this project. The federal changes introduce some new terminology and some new processes. One of the key terms embodied in the federal requirement is an eligible facilities request. And this means a request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that was previously authorized by a local jurisdiction and which does not substantially change as defined in this section. So I want to explain this a little further. And this definition applies to existing communication facilities that were authorized. And if a wireless carrier or company seeks to modify that, they're allowed to make a certain limited range of changes to that. And the city must approve that so long as it's not a substantial change and that is also defined by the federal regulations. So they can go in and they can collate new transmission equipment. They can remove existing equipment or replace equipment. And as long as it fits within that limited range of a height increase or width increase or increase of equipment at the base, the city must approve that request. Because of this new terminology and new process, the city has worked hard to fit to these federal requirements and these new terms and process into the framework of our existing regulations, even though these federal regulations continue to evolve. Another key provision of the federal changes is a process time constraint. The federal regulations require that the city must process the applications within a certain timeframe depending on what type of facility it is and the amount of change. And it also provides time for the city to stop the elapsed time or the deadline if there's additional information required in order to be able to process that application. And generally, it's 30 days that the city can stop it for at initial submittal and 10 days at resubmittal. Talking to a little bit about our public involvement process. The subject of these changes has been shared with the Washington State Department of Commerce as a change to the city's development regulations as required under the Growth Management Act. It also has been subject to a CEPA decision. The city issued a determination of nonsignificance on October 19th. And that issuance of that CEPA decision also initiated a public comment opportunity. Additionally, the city sent notice of the opportunity to review and provide feedback to a list of contacts on October 21st and published in the newspaper notice of that opportunity on October 26th. Prior to the planning commission public hearing, the city did receive comment letters and written comments from two wireless carriers. We received comments on behalf of Verizon and we received comments on behalf of AT&amp;T. After the public hearing, we also did receive comments on behalf of T-Mobile. These comments generally fell into four categories. They provided some comments on syntax or formatting, and the city has conducted additional reviews to pick up and correct some of those things. So we appreciate the opportunity of them pointing these out. The wireless carriers or carrier representative also commented on things that were outside of the city's scope in terms of the changes that we're making to be consistent with federal requirements. We are making a few minor changes just to accommodate the processes that are now involved by the federal requirements. And the comments also, some comments also required clarification that we go back to the commenters to understand exactly the issue raised or the nature of their comments and how it applies. So the city has actually had follow-up conversations with the contacts for all of these wireless carriers to make sure that we understood their comments and in order to adequately evaluate those. Some comments from the wireless carriers did warrant that the city go back and effect some further changes. These were included in the changes taken back to the planning commission as we did make some changes between the first introduction of the topic to the planning commission and the time that they concluded their deliberations and made a recommendation. So at this time, we have incorporated all of the changes that we believe to be appropriate based upon the comments we have received. We are continuing to work with the parties to make sure and address any comments that they're continuing to provide. So the schedule that staff is anticipating is the discussion of Titles 17, the subdivision code, and Titles 18, the zoning code, tonight. And hopefully to bring back at your next regular meeting the full slate of ordinances that tie all of these changes together and address changes to Ordinance 6790, 6797, 98, and 99. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Does anyone on the council have a question?
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand?
Councilmember Sterns.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Yeah, I had a question about the EFR. And you mentioned like some limitations about, I think it was height. So how much, how higher can they go without having to go through the whole process again?
There, it's, it's a couple of different options for increases in height. Generally, they can add to the height of an existing tower by 10% or by the height of an additional array of antennas and the necessary separation between those arrays.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, I mean, you still want to have like massive towers. And what about concealments? Is that something that's covered here?
Yes. With these changes and in anticipation of the fact that we may have more facilities as a result of the requirements handed down to us, we have looked, we have bolstered our opportunity to require concealment techniques for either the small cell or for other types of installation of wireless communication facilities. I could show you just kind of like what some of those could consist of. So this slide kind of shows that a couple of examples in other jurisdictions of where they have employed concealment techniques to hide new wireless communication facilities. In the first image, it's disguised as a tree although it's out by itself. And in the second image, they've actually colorized the antenna to blend into the surface of the building that it's mounted to. This slide also kind of answers your other question about how much change in height can they add? Exceeding the eligible facilities request and going beyond that to a substantial change involves a height increase of 10% of the height of the existing facility that was authorized or the height of one antenna array not to exceed 20 feet.
Thank you. It's helpful.
Do we have any more questions?
Councilmember Malinga has raised her hand?
Hi, Councilmember Malinga.
Thank you. My question was, when does things like this require Federal Aviation Administration review? Because on some things, like the towers, they're required to review and other things they're not. Is this one of those things that requires a review or it doesn't?
It would depending on where it's located in the community and in terms of proximity to the city's airport and depending on the height at which it's proposed. So the city generally errs on the side of caution and would seek wireless carriers to demonstrate that they were meeting FAA area requirements for compatibility with the airport.
Right. And then also to any FAA facility that are in the area, right?
Correct, like our control center on Auburn Way South, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Trump, anyone else raised their hand?
Councilmember Trump, manual.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Jeff, do we have, don't we have some of those towers already here in Auburn? And do we have any, my second question would be, do we have applicants asking for some to be higher than what are recommended?
We do already have many towers in the community. This map, it's a little bit outdated because it doesn't show all of the towers or wireless communication facility installations. But this is a map of where some of them that have existed in the community the longest are located. We've also inherited some other facilities when we annexed the Lee and West Hill areas that were previously authorized in the county. We do have, many of the towers that we have are on the order of 80 to 100 feet tall. And that seems fairly common with those types of facilities. We have built into the framework of our regulations a way for us to allow wireless communication facilities to exceed the height standard of the particular zoning district that they're located in, either through a land use approval process of an administrative or a conditional use permit. So this has generally been a benefit to the wireless carriers as they don't need to go through the variance and its strict criteria in order to get additional increases in height.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering my question.
Are there any more questions? Hearing no one, I would like to thank Mr. Dixon for the great presentation tonight. And I would like to turn it back over to Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. So we will move on to our last two, hopefully very quick agenda items. Are there any other discussion items this evening? And if not, is there any new business we need to cover? Okay, hearing none and seeing none. Thank everybody for your time and your patience tonight and all the presenters tonight. We greatly appreciate your participation. As always, stay safe, mask up, wash your hands. Keep Auburn safe, people. We got a ways to go. And with that, we are